Great, thank you all for coming. It's a little bit past seven. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great, it is August 4th and we are going to start with walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins here? Small crowd tonight, must be vacation week or something. Great, so we'll get back to the next item, which is a report of the town administrator.
Thank you. Just a few items to update the board on since we last met on Thursday. The bill that the home rule petition approved by town meeting for the land swap for Clapp Road development, the Bartlett Field so-called, was heard by the Committee on Local Affairs. I went and I testified in support of that bill per the board's pleasure and hopefully it will have swift action before the end of the year. The legislature is going to recess pretty soon, so I don't know what the status is, but Representative Cantwell was there as well and spoke on behalf as well as Mr. Livingstone's attorney, Adam Brodsky, but there were no questions and it seemed to go well, mostly because for 1.8 acres, we're getting 27, so there really wasn't a lot of concern since it was greater value than it was originally. I want to share with you a little update on the SLUPE. I can't encourage folks enough to try and take advantage of the first public transit system that we've had. We put the electronic signboard down in the harbor last week. I think that's helped. I did get ridership information from the first day, July 2nd through July 21st. There's been a total of 345 trips, road, people actually taking the bus. We don't know how much redundancy that is, but that equals a little less than 17 people per day, 16.4. So definitely the numbers are really low. The highest utilization as far as folks getting on are, as we would hoped, at Wheeler and Central Park, 51 and 45 folks respectfully, and a lot of stops pick up on the return route likely at Village Market with 58. And then the next highest is Green Bush, so at the MBTA station with 35. 10 folks at Widow's Walk, which is a good start because we want people to know they can get there from there, and 17 to the Senior Center. I'm meeting with the Executive Director of GATRA tomorrow, I believe, maybe Thursday, to sort of see how we can get the word out more about this, but just encouraging people to use it and hopefully we'll be able to keep it, because as you know, this is a pilot program.
Can we, I wanted to get together with them also and get some feedback as to ideas from the community of what we can do differently.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we can post, are they coming here or are you going there?
No, he's coming here Thursday. I can give you the date time before you leave this evening.
Yeah, or maybe another-
Or if there's specific questions you want me to ask him, I can.
I just think there's a little bit of feedback-
He's going to come into this meeting, it's just, this is sort of a update on what the challenges were to see if we could, you know, respond in real time, so we'll have to see.
And this is the type of thing, you know, we want, we've asked since the beginning to reach out to the community and get your feedback. What's going to make you use it more? I know that, I think there's a lot of kids that are using it. I think the newness of it, people don't know that they wave the person down and they'll stop. Literally, if you're anywhere on the route, they'll pick you up. And, and the timing of things, I think, are throwing people off a little bit, but overall, people say it's a great service, we're just not using it as much as we want to.
Yeah, and again, it takes a while, but, you know, hopefully I'll learn more tomorrow or Thursday to do that, and I'll keep you folk posted. We did send out a notice today and tweeted and blasted that Town Hall will be closed tomorrow morning and will reopen to the public at 12:30. There's a major water system connection that has to happen between this building, the police station, and the fire station tomorrow, so we will have no water. So obviously, we have no restroom facilities, no fire protection, so staff's just going to come in at noon and will reopen to the public at 12:30. It's a little short notice, but I didn't want to delay it and then thus delay future work on the water project. The last two things I want to talk about are sort of related. Since the board's last meeting, but widely reported in the media, is the fact that the town was informed that the appeal from Woods Hole was accepted by FEMA. And we're trying to manage folks' expectations right now. We won't get those new maps. Originally, I was told very shortly, and then very shortly is turned into November, December, which makes it extremely difficult for us because our warrant closes the middle of December and we have to accept those revised maps at our town meeting in April, or sometime in 2016, but it's unclear. I think it says spring town meetings. So, I, I just, I think it's great news, but I also want to underscore the fact that this doesn't mean that nothing happens with people's flood maps in terms of their elevations or whatever, until we see the revised maps, but those elevations will probably only change one or two feet at best and not for everybody that has a home in the flood plain. So, I, I think folks may think this is a panacea for lots of issues, and we won't see the maps for a few months. We will scrutinize them and do our due diligence like we did when we got the maps originally in 2012, but this does not mean that the status quo will continue prior to all this work we've been doing.
She answered my question. Thanks.
Okay. And then, sort of related to this, and I know the board's aware of this, but I want to make sure, I talked to folks watching at home, is we received a rather substantial grant to work on flood resiliency and an EPA technical staff are coming, several EPA technical staff, for two days, two full days, August 11th and 12th, to look at all our vulnerable areas, look at our erosion issues, look at all our flooding areas, and have a community forum on the 11th, I believe it is, at South Situate High School Auditorium to solicit impact, and then the next day to come back and work with the town on ways to mitigate vulnerable flooding areas, protect people in flood areas, and encourage development in safer areas. Very, very important work that we got through the very hard work of staff and Nancy Durfee, our new coastal resource officers. Number of staff going to be involved to the day. I know the board's been invited to participate, but this is sort of a big deal for the town to have the federal agency work with us, and it's two full days, the 11th and the 12th, and I would encourage people to go to the forum on the 11th.
So, on the 11th, who would want to go to that forum? Anyone that loves, lives in a flood plain, anyone that's having issues with the beach nourishment stuff, the seawall stuff, all of this stuff-
Anything related to coastal issues and storm impacts and flooding, development, whatever. It's my, it's very different from the forum we had with CZM in an entirely different way. It's about resiliency as opposed to coping, I guess, is, for lack of a better word.
Great, so that, we won't have another meeting, but that's next Tuesday.
August 11th from 6 to 8.
Yeah, 6 to 8, right. But those folks will be here from 12 to 8 both day, and 9 to 5 both days.
Great. Can you, is that all you had?
Yes.
Can you just comment on the, we're in the news with the shark the other day?
So, we had a sighting of a fin on Hammerock Beach Saturday. The lifeguard, in accordance with our protocol, called it into the Harbor Master's office, who is immediately dispatched. We also had a police boat now in the water. A couple of folks did see a fin. The beach was closed immediately by the lifeguard, and they patrolled along with Marshfield for about an hour and a half and did not see anything. I do know that many, many people at the beach did not cooperate with the requests to come out of the water, and the police had to not only be on the water, but go to the beach as well to respond. And the Harbor Master also encourages people, if they do see a fin, to take a picture of it, although I do believe there was some video that folks had. It's unlikely that it was a shark because the, it could have been a sunfish or another kite, or perhaps a different kind of shark, not a great white, but that's why we have the identification signs on the beach signs and everything like that. But the lifeguards all have a protocol on what to do, and I think it worked, it worked pretty well. And again, the beach was reopened again in about an hour.
So, remember, our lifeguards are high school kids and, you know, college kids coming back, please listen to them. They're doing it for your safety and they're just following the rules, so they say, "Get out of the water, get out of the water." You know, it's for your own best interest. Any other thoughts on, great, and maybe we can just run through the events that are coming up. This weekend is Heritage Days, so from 7th, the 7th and 9th through the harbor, that'll be going on. The 15th, which is next Friday, is it?
It's updated on the morning.
Yeah, oh, is it a different date than the 15th?
Well-
The Shark Awareness? The Shark Amongst Us presentation?
Yeah, Tony, 8/15.
Yes, 15th.
Yeah, the 15th. Is that Friday, I guess was, I think it's Friday. That's at St. Luke's. And then-
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday. It's Saturday from 6 to 8 p.m., St. Luke's.
Saturday. And then we have another antique car show coming up, it looks like 8:20. The last one was a great success. I couldn't make it down there, but did any of you guys-
I had a meeting, I drove by. It looked, it looked like it was pretty well attended, but I wanted to go on a-
Actually, when, it was actually well attended. They filled up all the spots along Cole Parkway and then down Otis Road, so I think they're looking forward to the next one, to see if there's going to, there might be more vehicles, so it's a good event.
And then on the 28th, at the end of the month, is the DPW Truck Day, and that's a town hall from 9 to 12. So, great, all right, move on to the next item. What we're going to do-
Tony, can we, um-
Oh yeah, that's right, more-
Do you mind? Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to recognize the service. We had a former selectman pass away last week, Mr. Stephen Hall, who was a Board of Selectmen from 1969 to 1976. Father Tom Hall, who is a very active member on the Historical Commission and does a lot of work for our town, so just wanted to extend our condolences to the family and our appreciation to Mr. Hall for his past dedication to the town.
Great. Yeah, I think we all agree with you and, you know, our thoughts go to the family and, Tricia, do we bring the flag down?
No, no, not typically.
Okay, well, great, thank you for your service and, you know, again, condolences to the family. Anything else before we, so, public facilities update, that was included in, or is that a separate?
Yeah, I'd give you one. I didn't have anything new to report from our last meeting in terms of, you've got to report on the library bids and approve the contract, so we're still on target to issue bids for the public safety building the end of this month.
Great. Okay, so we have a, next is a discussion and vote for a Hockers Peddlers license. Burt's Ice Cream, is Stephen Burt here? Come on up. Have a seat. Yeah, the mics are over, can hear you, and if you can just say your name and address.
My name's Stephen Burt. My address is 1045 Monpont, Hanson, Mass.
Great, and you're before, as we have the backup, you have an ice cream truck-
Yes.
-that you want to come and bring down to, it looks like Hammerock?
Yeah, I'm looking specifically for Hammerock, because I do Marshfield right now, so it makes sense, you know, to, I get asked all the time. I've been doing four years in Marshfield, so I'm over there quite a bit. I get asked all the time, "Can you come over, can you come over?" And, you know, I've never pursued it until now.
So what's your route in Marshfield?
I do the whole, whole town.
The whole town?
Yeah. Yeah, it takes me, takes me two days to do all of Marshfield, eh.
So what, what's your thought for Hammerock? What do you want to?
Uh, just went over, I'm in that part of Marshfield, you know, just be able to-
Set schedule?
I don't have a set schedule. You know, I, I actually, I'm permitted in eight towns right now. I live in Hanson, but I have, I go as far as Rainham, and all the way, I do East Bridgewater, Bridgewater, Hanover, Pembroke, Marshfield, Whitman, Hanson. I've done a few other towns also, but right now I'm permitted in eight towns, so I'm all over the place. So it'd probably be two or three times a week. I'm in Marshfield quite a bit, because it's, that's probably my best town during, during July and August. So it'd probably be, I would think, two or three days a week, I'd, I'd shoot over the bridge if-
So, do you, how many trucks you have?
One.
So, two or three times a week, and you'd be there for 15 minutes and then leave?
Yeah, depending how busy it is, you know, I'd, basically-
Really just make one run through?
Basically, yeah, that's pretty much all I do anywhere I go. You know, when I, when I go down along the beaches in Marshfield, I just, one, usually one pass through. Sometimes if it's a real, you know, if it's a Saturday or Sunday, sometimes I'll go through around 1 o'clock and then maybe swing back through late, late in the day, but, you know, that's, it all just depends how it's going. You know, I never, I, I get in the truck and it, I don't know if I'm going left or right, basically, you know, it's-
Sean?
Lorraine, do you know, do we have any other one doing that?
No.
Nice, and down at Hammerock, we don't?
We don't, we have one license to go along.
Yeah, I've been told, people, people flag me down all the time and ask me to go over and they say, you know, "There's no trucks ever over here," so, you know, I thought it might be a good opportunity.
Mr. Burt, are you aware of our policy about selling ice cream or selling items near general stores or stores?
I thought I read something, 300 feet, to a business.
I know that the beach, the public beach is right next to the store, San Zen Cafe, and so you could not park your truck, or shall we say, solicit or sell-
Yeah.
... any of your items within 300 feet of that store, which pretty much precludes Hammerock Beach. Also, it would preclude you from parking next to the fire station, which is a public parking lot.
Right.
Just want to make sure you're aware that that's-
Okay, I mean, if, you know, I'm not really sure where everything is, you know, where that is on Hammerock.
Once you cross over the bridgeway-
If somebody could maybe map it for me, you know, I-
Know where the bridgeway is?
Bridgeway, the restaurant, yeah, the restaurant, yep.
Once you cross over that bridge, it's right on the other side.
Okay.
So, the reason I'm telling you that is because I have no issues of you going all the way up to Fourth Cliff, which is at the very end of the mouth of the river-
To the left.
Uh, to the left, but you, you could not, which is going to maybe create problems for you, but we, we can't allow you to do that because we have a store that's selling there. And I know in the past, we've had some issues where we neglected to, we've allowed people to sell things, forgetting that we're actually competing against these stores that we have. So that's why I'm only raising it now, because-
Yeah.
-you got to be very aware of it, acutely aware of it-
Yeah.
-because you cannot sell within 300 feet of that store, which means you can't sell to the beach, you can't sell around San Zen Cafe, there were the intersection there, there's a post office, there's a fire station, all of which would be precluding you from selling it there. As far as further going down Central Ave and going down to the other bridge, and all the way down to the mouth, Old Mouth, I have no issues with that, but you cannot plan on being there.
Is it possible for some, to get, maybe get a map?
And-
Yes. Map it out for me, say, you know, so, there's no question in my mind, so I can, I know I can go here, I know I can go there, because I, that's-
Continue our discussion. The other thing is, as John brought up, there's a, there's a direct competition, because they sell ice cream, they have ice cream.
Right, right, I'm, I'm aware of it.
It's all hot dogs and blah, 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 but this is a, there's no gray area in this.
Yeah.
And what John brings up, and he's trying to nicely say around it, that's where you're going to get most of your businesses, within the 300 feet of where you can't sell. You know, the rest of the area is more remote, and most of those people walk down to that area anyways.
Yeah.
Is that the sense?
I think that's fair.
So, it's probably not going to be as active as you, you're going to want to be where you can't go, is-
Right.
Marty, anything to add?
Well, I was just going to say, if, when, are you familiar with when you do go over the bridge there?
You know, I don't, I don't really know Hammerock that well. I've been over there maybe once.
Is the, is the beach right there, and that's, it's so close to where the store is that, and you, as soon as you come over there, it's going to be, there will be a ton of people there, and what do you do? You know, you can't, you can't stop there, you can't sell to anybody there.
Right.
And that, again, that is where most of your people are going to be.
Yeah.
Did you come across any type of a situation like that in Marshfield?
No, no.
Different providers along the beaches there?
No, there was an ice cream shop down in the Brant Rock area. They, they just closed up though, but I never, I never did much down in there anyway.
I only say that because if Mr. Burt, if you were there, the store owner, I'd be saying the same thing if somebody's going to compete against you. That's all, the only reason, I'm trying to be fair to people who have businesses already. And that's, that's the Board of Selectmen, they have a policy.
Mm-hmm.
It's been in place for a number of years.
Yeah, I mean, I think if somebody just maps it for me and says, "That's the way you can and can't go," I mean, I'm fine with that if, you know, I'll try it out, if it's, if it's worth my while this year, then I'll, I'll pursue it again next year. If not, then so be it, you know.
There's the whole policy, you know, the 15, you know, the time you can stop and all that, so just make yourself familiar with that, that's right in there, so.
Well, I mean, from my opinion, I'd be reluctant to give it to you, only because I think that's the way you're going to get in and out of there, and you're going to, people are going to want you to stop, and I think it's going to cause a conflict. I think you're going to be tempted to stop, if not having to stop, so you don't run over a little seven-year-old kid, and it's going to cause a problem. So I, I almost don't think it's the best idea for that area for selling ice cream that is direct competition with that, that's, that's my two cents. Yes, Marty?
What I, what I might suggest is that we, I mean, I don't want to push this off, but maybe we should do that, have you take a look at the area to see if it's, if it's feasible for what you have in mind? Because you'd have to see that when you go over the bridge, you're in the middle of everything, so how are you going to, you have to pull away from those people, it's going to be a tough situation.
Yeah, yeah, it just goes over the Julian Street Bridge.
Well, exactly.
Actually, he's going to drive, going in up, yeah, well.
He's going to fly.
I mean, that's-
I know what you're saying, but, no.
I mean, I would certainly give you, you know, I would vote to give you the license, but I think that you're going to have an issue just simply by the area that you're going right through.
Yeah.
Literally, I think you're going to go through about 7, at least 75 to 80% of your, the people that are going to, wanting to buy from your truck. So I don't think it'd be fair to you either, you know?
Yeah.
We meet in two weeks, summer's just about over then.
If you want to postpone it, I mean-
Well, I'm just saying, then your summer's almost over at that point.
Yeah, but at this point, it's, it's late for me anyway, so I mean-
I don't mind having, giving them the opportunity, mapping out where you can't go, see how it goes, because obviously, there's some houses and kids down the streets, one way or the other, that can't walk to this location, so it would be an amenity to them, but if, if it turned out that you were parked there, I mean, obviously, it's like going through certain sections, you turn it off the bell or whatever it is, and you go through, you just, it's closed. So I, I'd say, see how it goes, give you a shot for the next few weeks or a few months.
It's not so much about the beach at noontime, it's, remember when you were growing up, it'd come around dinnertime, and that's when you'd go running out of the house.
You know, to be honest-
Chase them down the streets, so, you know, he, this, how long is Hammerock, so he might get a lot of business down either end, so I'm, I'm-
To be honest with you, when I, when I do the beaches down along Marshfield, probably 90% of my business is around dinnertime, like you say, people are at the, at the homes, they're back at the homes.
That might be our policy too, so be careful, because I think Paul, Paul Reedy was pretty adamant about that, you know?
I think that is, I think it's-
You might just read that, that's, that's all I say, you know?
I mean, he's only coming two times a week.
Right.
So, I don't know. Well, if someone wants to make a motion, either for or against-
Move to grant Burt's Ice Cream a Hockers Peddlers license seasonally until October, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in accordance with the Selectmen's Policy Number 53-12, an inspection by the Board of Health.
Second.
Further discussion?
Did you say from 8:00 or 11:00 a.m., Sean?
Oh, I probably said 8:00. I gotta, I gotta blow this up. All right, yeah, I'm sorry, I'll reread it. Move to grant Burt's Ice Cream a Hockers Peddlers license seasonally until October, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in accordance with the Selectmen's Policy Number 53-
No, no, 11:00 a.m.
11:00, all right, 11:00 a.m., it's been a long day, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in accordance with the Selectmen's Policy 53-12, an inspection by the Board of Health.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy.
Didn't even know what I said.
Further discussion? So, I'll just repeat, if he's only going to be going there two or three times a week, it is probably going to be a conflict with the, with Santa, and we know that she's going to be out there watching, and if you stop, it's going to, it's going to cause a problem, because that's where most of her revenue comes in the summer, I would guess, it's from that little ice cream window.
But he knows that going in, the other person who I've gotten to know since then didn't know that going in, and we probably forgot to tell her, you know, and now, it's just, I think it could be a little different.
Vote, vote. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So it is a four to one vote in favor, so you get it, you have a couple of months to figure it out and see if it's worth your while and if you want to come back next year.
Okay.
And I just implore you to just pay attention to the rules, because she will come in here at the next meeting and-
Yeah, I know, I've, I've heard, I've, I've heard from more than one, so.
Good, thank you and good luck.
Okay, thank you.
And Lorraine, you'll get him a copy of the bylaw?
He has one written as well, but we'll talk about it soon.
Now, he has, does he have to come pick something up or afterwards right now, I mean, he is the-
Well, Board of Health, have you seen the Board of Health?
Uh, yeah, I talked to them, they said to work, come see them after.
Right, because they're going to give you a ring, basically a ring to say, "This is the area that's prohibited, stay out of."
Okay.
By that and you're fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Outdoor entertainment permits, a discussion and vote for that, is Ms. Wilkins Becker here?
Yes. Hi, I'm Mary Ruth Wilkins Becker, 50 Captain Pierce Road.
How are you?
Fine, how are you?
Good. So you want to have a birthday party?
Yes, for my 93rd, 93-year-old dad.
And, how far down Captain Pierce is that, is that?
50 Captain Pierce is three houses away from the Egypt Country Store.
On the right side, on the same side of the store?
On the left side, no, if it's going towards St. Francis, three on the left.
Right, and I saw you wrote a note and notified your neighbors?
Yes, I did.
Staying up till 11 o'clock, Hanson?
Yeah, I hope so.
Is that the house with the barn?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Any discussion, any questions for Ms. Wilkins Becker?
Yeah, the band, is that the guys from Green Bush?
It's the Brown Brothers, the Brothers Duo that play PJs on Thursday nights.
Frank, that's, that's fun, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, they're great, not very loud, good music.
Motion?
Love it.
I'll move to grant an outdoor entertainment license permit for a 93rd birthday party from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on August 8th, 2015, at 50 Captain Pierce Road.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday to your dad.
So now we're going to do a discussion and interview some, the rest of the annual appointments. So, Lorraine, you can-
We just have two people here this evening that will be meeting you that are interested in coastal advisory.
Great.
Frank Snow and George Simmons.
Great, Frank, you want to start us off? How are you?
Good, how you doing? So, I have a, had a discussion about appointments, and you were good enough to reappoint me, I think, to Conservation Commission.
Yep.
And tomorrow night we'll be meeting and discussing a new liaison for CPC.
Right.
And so that's gonna give me all kinds of free time so I had been working with Nancy and Pat anyways on a lot of these issues so I figured why not toss my hat in and see I think you have two openings one for business and one for inland and I could do either so whichever works view is.
Any questions for Frank?
That was my biggest concern was whether or not you were still gonna be the liaison to CPC and how you would manage all three.
Yeah no that's that was part of the reasoning for doing that.
Okay.
And I sent out an email to our members letting them know that that was gonna be discussed and voted tomorrow night so I'm not sure yet who will be doing that.
Still might be you though.
I don't think so no I can't do another.
So we'll have to wait to hear how the outcome of that right?
Well it's gonna be somebody else so.
Usually people like to do that it's kind of a CPC's fund kinda look at projects and and.
Yeah and it does have a sort of a timeframe fall you know into early before town meeting and then sort of just moves on a little more slowly and I'd be glad to help whoever's doing that so shouldn't be an issue.
Nope.
No I'm fine.
Marty any? The only question I had and I don't really have a big concern just want to discuss it is so now there's already a Concom person that is appointed to the committee you are on you're the chair right?
Of Concom.
Of Concom also so now we'll have two Concom people on there which I don't think is a bad thing but I just want to talk about it for a second you have you know huge knowledge of the town of the coast you've been doing this stuff for a long time and really can add something to the committee but I just don't want it to be overweight with two people from Concom.
Rich Harding is the liaison.
Right.
And and he lives in Hammarok and I think he's the right person to do that and Rich has a good outlook on on those sort of things and we do play a fairly large role in in some of the issues that come up so I think it's good to have have that input I mean I think most of you know I'm not a I try to look at things realistically in how we apply these and I know that there's a lot of rules and regulations and I've seen all the different things come from the state with their weighing in on different issues and certainly had the opportunity to work with Pat more recently after these storms so pretty familiar with that sort of thing I think I can look at it just as well as the resident of town's situation you know the costs of this the impact the effect that it's gonna have on folks we have a ton of things to weigh out when we look at foreshore protection or public safety my dad was a firefighter for a million years and familiar with the storms and how that would impact people and the decisions that have to be made so I think I can bring all those kind of things.
Yeah I just think it's worthy of discussion so we're aware of it and I don't know if anyone has any feedback or so why don't we.
Well not as the conservation's not that bad.
No no it's good I think you bring a lot of knowledge that'd be good but I'll you know later.
Sure.
So it looks like you can fill two right now we're having problems with this committee because we can't fill it I think there's three open spots right now boater and win and business owner so we're I don't think we're gonna say which one you are yet if you get voted only so we don't narrow down the the prospects of the other one.
Fine with me.
So any other discussions if not are we doing the motions at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Frank appreciate your consideration. And then is George Simmons here?
Yes.
Hi George how are you?
I'm doing well thanks.
But if you can just say your name and your address.
My name's George Simmons I live at forty-five Rebecca Road.
Great.
So I'm applying for this position as a boater I've been an active boater for fifteen years in Situate I've been in three different marinas I started out behind the quarter deck I've been in the Tom Marina and I'm over on the three A Marina I've got thirty years of financial management experience I've been a CFO of public and private companies and I think I've got a good idea of cost-benefit analysis that's one of my specialties I think I could bring that to the committee and lastly my father and his mother had a house in Situate since nineteen thirty-seven I've owned a house since nineteen ninety and I'm a full-time resident here in Situate and I love marine issues and I love living along the coastline.
Great any questions for George so where on Rebecca Road help so you.
I'm about halfway down.
On the waterside?
Yes.
Okay good so you've seen firsthand.
I'm pretty knowledgeable yes.
He's lived it.
John Marty any any thoughts questions but great well it seems like you have you know certainly the business background that would be helpful and the and the boating knowledge and then also just understanding of living on Rebecca Road you know what storms can do and what foreshore protection we need so.
Yes sir.
Great so we're not gonna vote till later but thank you for coming in and.
Good.
Introduce yourself.
Thank you George.
Funny can I say one quick thing?
No.
Yes. I had mentioned this to Tricia but we had a here Concom hearing a couple of weeks ago and to the foreshore protection or more the elevation piece Nancy Durfee Pat and Carol all worked incredibly tirelessly for a good two weeks to help people get their projects ready to be elevated I know Nancy put off her vacation Pat was here for hours and hours Carol was too so you know we all tried to work at that piece of that but they did it.
They did fourteen hearings in one night for all the elevation grants so they can meet the deadline.
Wow that's great.
I think the next one did.
Your next one.
If there's any way you can send an email to us then at least we have a document of it and I know we can put it in the files and stuff so that's great but great work for them and.
Yeah.
Have that done by that deadline?
There was a deadline that FEMA imposed and and they worked to get that and then I know it was just another whole week I think it's worked in Nancy today and she finally had everything submitted but in order to get that piece done we had to vote it at that meeting so they they did a huge amount of work and people at Situate especially these folks that applied should be hugely grateful that they did all that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks Frank. Okay now moving on to a special event application.
Yeah Karen there was a new package just so the board's aware in front of you those changes we've remained or narrowed today.
So the first one we're gonna deal with is Riverside approval of a special event for Riverside Park tomorrow?
Yes. No they just handed it to us it's under the.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
There's something in here.
Thanks.
Wait everyone. Quick can you just say your name and your address?
Kara Tondor forty-two Williamsburg Lane in Situate.
Okay so tell us what you want to do.
We are we want to put together a festival on November first for a few different reasons it's sort of getting into the fall well later in the fall there's no football that weekend of course and we want to do just kind of a music festival with different vendors and whatnot one of the components of this festival that we're gonna do is a soup competition which we hope to get the committee involved in and have it be sort of a fundraiser I don't I don't want to give all the details now I think this is sort of my preliminary you know meeting with you guys to make sure this is something we can do is a lot of work in in these things I've done a bunch of fundraisers in the past and you know before getting all the details I want to make sure that we have permission to proceed and I understand there'll probably be additional meetings with you guys to make sure that you know all the details get approved but this is sort of the preliminary hearing and we want to you know this is one hundred percent Situate community-based you know I think that the big thing that I have in mind is we're gonna be I'm speaking with a few different editors about doing a cookbook which will be a you know a donation to the community in some way or another I don't want to say what it is yet because there's a bunch of us that need to meet and decide you know how we want to allocate that and I'm hoping this is the first year of many so this is a big idea I've had for a while so.
So why don't you just elaborate a little bit on and conceptually we'll tell you our thoughts on it but so you're thinking of a one-day event from lunchtime to what's your timeframe on it?
Um I think I'd put.
Twelve to six?
Twelve to six.
Eleven AM to eight PM.
Yeah eleven to eight and in that I wanted to put some cushioning in for like set up and breakdown times because I know that sometimes these things go later and you know you need time to to set up.
And you're thinking about having music?
Mm-hmm definitely music beer and wine in the parking lot it's privately owned I have permission from all the business owners and also the real estate owner which I could of course can get ready for you guys and we will be doing some food the soup thing you know I know will require additional permits from the Board of Health but again like I was saying to you I'm not gonna start getting all these people to put all this time in until I know that this is something that's a feasible possibility so this is why I'm here tonight.
So is it gonna be mostly entertainment-based or is it more food-based or is it what are you thinking is it like five bands coming on is it does someone?
Um I again until I have that permit in hand five bands probably sounds excessive to me I would say it's gonna be you know a mix between a couple of bands and maybe a couple singer-songwriters throughout the course of the day to kind of you know keep things going smoothly without having you know huge setups and breakdowns and whatnot so I'm thinking maybe like a singer-songwriter a band a singer-songwriter a band something along the lines of that food wise you know I don't know yet because I want to get these permits in place before we you know start planning all that out I know there will be some food involved definitely the soups of course everyone will be served safe certified and go through all the proper channels with the Board of Health.
I'll open it up to you guys.
So here's first I'm not saying anything that's bad about the concept I think it's an interesting idea of trying to have some kind of celebration if you will music food elsewhere in town and this is the first time in Green Bush that I my memory that I think there's something planned North Situate has something during October obviously Heritage Days you know St. Patrick's the number of things in Front Street so I think this is a great opportunity for Green Bush to have its signature event great time of year November you know hopefully it's not too cold it's warm enough to be outside perfect timing you got the Bound Brook not Bound Brook.
Herring.
The Herring Run or the Herring Brook which is nice and so on but this just right out of the game I'm just thinking okay parking could be a major problem to take to think about you know because if you're gonna use the parking lot for the music then you're not gonna have people to be able to park there you're gonna have to find care.
We have two different options one of which is and again I've not have not proceeded with getting anything locked down this is the preliminary step I understand things might be contingent upon whatever.
So the reason why I say parking is you you could look at the MBTA you could look at surrounding businesses private owners who'd be willing to do it so that's a concern that has to be figured out because one of the problems is if people were parking off-site and they start crossing the road they go to the medical building before the roundabout start crossing over that's a potential problem the other thing I just throw out there is the neighborhood directly behind it is in a it is in the business district but still I would assume those people who live there the last thing they want are all those streets McDonald Terrace and Ford Place to be jammed with cars for people trying to find a parking spot so logistically that would be an issue I would think again for car vehicle stuff.
And this is contingent upon we have the MBTA station as an option and we also have the medical building directly as an option both of which have done things in the past.
And I think there there's solutions for these I'm not saying insurmountable hurdles I'm just saying but I think that's a major concern that you're gonna want to address.
Very much so.
But I think it's a great idea obviously you're gonna have to with the liquor and alcohol or just alcohol beer and wine whatever it's going to be you gotta be very cautious clearly your reputation's on it so I'm just but that's the way it is with Heritage Days and everything else.
I know exactly what we need to do to make this.
And you've guys done it with you've done it with Riva during Heritage Day so that's not a concern but I always say that's a concern generally it's a concern but I mean I know you folks know what you're doing aside from that music I don't think it's a Sunday you're looking at.
It's also it's it's got an early end time.
I was gonna say because it's time of year I forgot what kind it gets dark early around then too so that's another concern.
It's just after daylight savings yes or maybe it's right before.
It's right before actually because.
It's right before yes so I think it's probably around five fifteen five twenty.
Just keep that in mind because that can impact the timing for having the event.
Right which is why the the end time will be it's gonna be more of an afternoon event I just wanted to build in a little bit of cushioning in case you know.
The first Saturday in November it used to be the last Saturday or Sunday.
Sunday.
Sunday of October but maybe it's the daylight savings I forgot no I know that I'm saying daylight savings.
No I think it's usually the first Sunday or maybe I don't know.
We'll ask Google that question.
Well I think we'll figure it out.
Marty?
Just two quick questions Karen so a motion was twelve to six PM but we're actually looking for eight eleven to eight but the actual event is gonna be twelve to six is that what you're shooting for?
Yes.
Okay and the other question is so these other people from Situate that would be invited would be pretty much just like the soup type things the beer and wine is strictly your own correct?
Correct.
Okay that's all I have.
Correct.
I had a question Lorraine how far out do we need to approve these types of permits is it thirty days sixty days?
You've done them.
Actually we've done them as close as two weeks haven't we?
You know but for planning purposes you know it's time of.
There's so many things on hold.
Yeah that's my only concern is that there's not a lot of detail and I totally support your event and I understand the cart before the horse issue when you want to get some of these nailed down especially from the entertainment aspect that just seems to be a little bit up in the air so I'd rather have a little bit I don't know if we do we need to do all three tonight Mr. Chair?
Excuse me? Yes ma'am.
Do we need to do all three tonight?
No I don't think we have to do any of them.
Because I think there's a little bit more information that we could have.
Yeah it seems like she's looking for more of a consensus of do we support it?
To move forward yeah.
Potential problem.
There's just so much planning I mean I've done like again I've done so many fundraisers and there's so much planning that goes into this to not have you know an idea that this is gonna be okay and to start you know soliciting people and you know soliciting vendors and getting support from musicians and bands I mean this is I'm not saying it's a hundred percent a fundraiser but a lot of it is a fundraiser and we want to do something for the community and community outreach which we are huge on and we love that and so to put all this time and effort into it and not knowing that I have certainty that this is gonna happen is really really difficult because it's it's spinning a lot of wheels with a lot of unknowns and which at the end of the day you know how busy we all are it's a huge waste of time so that's why I'm coming before.
And when you say parking is an option have you nailed that down as a definitive option or is that just something?
I have two definitive options I need to figure out which one we're gonna go.
So they both said yes to you.
Harbor Medical Building one hundred percent MBTA they've done it before I've not had the yes you can do this I feel very confident that it can be done but either way we do have one option and that was the first thing I thought of I mean I sat down with the owner of the property for two hours and we walked around the building and we we figured out the traffic plan the pedestrian plan and we have everything you know figured out what we need to do down to how many barriers we need in order to secure the pedestrians off the you know off the driveway and both parking lots are on the same side of the street so there will be manless obviously anyone can do what they want but there will be no you know crossing of the street based on how we're advertising the event.
I feel like.
Go ahead.
Tony I feel like the main detail she's got there we're seeing for the most part we know there's gonna be beer and wine if we approve it we know there's gonna be an entertainment up until six PM we know obviously that there'll be people outdoors I don't really see that we should hold it up for the for the details that she needs to get straightened away if she's got two options on parking that was the only one that I really thought was gonna be a problem so I I just don't think we should hold them up where she's got so she may go through and start planning things and then she has to come back to us again which I can understand but I think that the majority of what she's looking for I think we either approve it or we don't approve it you know I don't think we hold it up.
John asked a question Karen that I had written down here only thing that wasn't asked what about a rain date what if it rains do you have a backup date or would you hold you couldn't hold that in the rain could you?
It was always tents I mean it depends on the level of rain I mean November can be very iffy I mean it's either something that I think that is gonna get canceled or we go ahead and we we put tents in the parking lot I mean there's really no more I can say about it I don't know if I'm necessarily here looking to get a rain date in place I think you know November first is probably the latest I'd want to go into you know doing an outdoor event just given how things get a little uncertain so I just let's hope for the best.
And I agree with what Marty's saying you know just let you either know that we're in favor of it or not the parking lot can you get from your next door neighbor's parking lot to your parking lot and staying on a sidewalk?
There is a sidewalk.
There is a sidewalk I thought there was so that's not an issue.
And we will have people with flags directing people you know if it's the medical building I think it's about fifty feet if it's the MBTA station it's a little bit more regardless we will have people.
All on the same side of the road.
And most important Karen and you know this because you're already the neighbors what John said right out of the gate.
Of course.
You know if you have their blessing I'm all for it.
Thus far we have very good relationships with all of the neighbors.
I have not heard one complaint and I don't know if the others have I think we would or Lorraine would hear pretty quick if there was a problem we have.
We're very. We're very mindful of that in both locations, especially because Situate is, you know, no matter where you go, you have residents, even if it's considered a business district, you have people that live there, and they're sensitive to noise.
Tricia, did you have a...
So, Lorraine, can you walk me through how the application that was submitted, that all the department heads reviewed, and what has changed from what is before the board tonight?
Sure. Um, it basically, the biggest impact it has is on the Board of Health for the changes. I mean, initially, we were under the impression that it was gonna be CP's Pizza and River Shale, and then we learned that it's going to be more, and we thought, you know, one band, so now we're understanding multiple bands, and now bringing in other restaurants, changes the whole...
And a soup, so, um, so...
So that's why we wrote, you know, it has to be pending necessarily for the Board of Health if they, if this stuff is due.
So, this is a new event, so that's why it's before the board, so I think, you know, if you're inclined to support it, you can say, "Sounds great," and you can also approve the beer and wine. Not knowing the entertainment, not having proof that we require from all the other residents that they're okay with it, and I would ask that all the department heads look at it again, um, given that the attendance might mushroom, and they're already expressing concerns about egress in and out of that building, they might require a detail officer. Um, I think, you know, the board can approve the event, but, um, I would like the departments to look at it again with all these changes that they did not know.
I, I think my sense is, I don't know how we could approve it not knowing any of the details that you, that you have yet. I think conceptually, we can say, "Yes, we like it, go forward with it, come us, come back and tell us what you're gonna do." You know, it's gonna be five, you know, if all of a sudden you say there's 10 bands, the neighbors don't like it, you know, I mean, we can't really vote on just this idea right now. I love the idea of doing something in that area, I love the idea of a community event. It'd be nice to know who the fundraiser's gonna go to, make sure it's a Situate entity. Um, I'm a little concerned about the drinking, if you're gonna coordinate that whole area, well, how are you gonna serve it? Do you have stations around, where you have kegs out there, and...
No, I have a beer truck with one of...
You know, I'd have to understand that a little bit more, because is it a family event? Is it a drinking event? Is it a music event?
It's all-encompassing.
Yeah, so if it's a family event, I probably don't like the idea of beer trucks and people, people having a lot of drinking, um, and music, you know, is that what we're trying...
The River Shale's a family restaurant, but we also have all of the encompassing things.
Oh, I know, you're all time.
We have a, we have a permit on the patio for, for music, um, we have an entertainment license on the patio, um, we haven't had any complaints, you know?
No, but we're opening up to a huge parking lot, just looking at your plans, so now you've got like a mini Greatwoods, right? Where we're having, okay, we're gonna have these three bands come out, and we're gonna have, you know, you could, depending on who you get for music...
Very mini. Might grow Greatwoods.
Hundreds of people standing out there watching this good music, you're gonna have...
And what's the harm in that if everything's controlled?
I just need to understand what it's gonna be before I say, "Yes, let's go ahead and do that," because if you've got a jumpy thing for kids over here next to the keg stand, then I may have an issue with that. And I just wanna understand the dynamic of the event.
I totally understand, I have two kids under three, I get it, and, you know, we're very, and we're very mindful in planning with everything.
I just need to know it before I vote it. I, I love the idea of, of an event that time of year, um, in that area of town, I live over there, so I think it's great. I just need to know more details before I say, "Yes, go ahead."
And I guess my issue is, it's hard to have the details unless I know that I have a green light to go ahead and plan the details.
So, right now, what we can do tonight, well, we can do anything tonight, but what I suggest is get a, a sense of the board, whether you're gonna get our support or not, and that at some point in time, you may come back to us and say, you know, "We're gonna have a, uh, whatever, something," and there may be something that we don't like, and we kind of work a wrap, an answer around it. Um, and of course, as Tricia said, with all the boards, all the committees also, and the town departments, you know, giving their two cents in, but, you know, kind of the blank check right now, I just think we need to get more details. But I will tell you that I support the event, um, along the guidelines of what we're talking about.
Were these gonna be separate motions? Were there gonna be separate motions anyway? Or...
Is that how they're written?
They were going to be separate.
So, what about the, the approval of the event itself? Now, you're, you're not comfortable with the beer and wine.
We don't even know the event, we don't even know what it is.
But you're, you're concerned, in other words, the entertainment license is separate. That's what you were kinda going with the bands, so we don't approve that yet, we actually approve for the event without the entertainment license.
I don't...
I'm just saying, throwing it out there.
From my opinion, I don't even understand what the event is yet, other than you wanna do some fall festive event that has music, kids, and alcohol. That's all I know right now, and food, and soup, you know, I love those, I think they're all great ideas, I just didn't understand what you're gonna do before I vote on any of it, from my perspective.
I'm inclined to support, Tony, on that, because I, I think it's a great idea, but I'm not comfortable without any detail, that's all. And I think it's a terrific idea, and if it takes you another week or two to get it a little bit more nailed down, knowing that you probably have the consensus support here anyway, so you can begin to move forward. I understand your dilemma, because you want that license and you wanna go forward, but we also have other interests to protect, and so we need to have, at least I do, I can't...
I understand that. I can tell you my exact plan, and you can decide whether or not you'd like it, and that's when I will start to solidify all the presences within the event. Um, you know, it's music, it's a beer and wine license, it's, you know, face painting, it's, you know, uh, certain vendors set up with local, all, everyone Situate, um, and then the soup festival is going to be a bunch of different restaurants, and then a bunch of different, um, just local residents submitting soup recipes, and people will come and taste, and they will judge the soups, and we're planning on publishing a cookbook, uh, recipes from a small town, which I already have, um, pretty serious interest from, um, a large publishing company to get this, you know, published and have it be a fundraiser going towards, um, again, there's like four or five different local town, you know, things that we wanna donate it to, but until the four of us involved with this, um, decide on, I don't wanna say, "Oh, we're doing this, or we're doing that," I don't, you know what I mean? So it's, but it's definitely, it's all, it's all within the zip code. Um, and so that's the, the event, I don't wanna start having people, you know, go get their health permits to say, "Two weeks before the event, it's not gonna happen." So that's why I'm here, trying to get this done now.
So I don't think, Kara, you're hearing, "It's not gonna happen." I think the board's saying, "Yes, we're actually encouraging it." We need more specificity, that's all.
Okay.
Okay? We're not gonna say no to alcohol or no to music, but if it turns into seven bands, five bands, something large, then we might say, "It may be way too big for the first go try-around." Um, so I agree with Tony in that, I'm for the event, I honestly don't have issues with music, even with the neighbors, that they're in the business district, they've moved into it, it's just a question of is it gonna be like AC/DC blaring out, which I know it's not, but I'm saying, we kinda have to know that, um, so that we can assure everybody, "No, it's going to be acoustic guitar," or it's going to be this, that's fine. Uh, the other issue I wanted to raise was, it is daylight savings, so keep that in mind, that's the day that the clocks go back, so maybe that's what you call it for the event. But I, I think you're hearing from the board, "Yes, we, we are very encouraged by it, we'd like it, but we do need a little bit more," that's all, because, you know, we don't grant these applications without more specificity, and that's the honest truth of all of them. So I think you're hearing us say, "Yes," just, you gotta go back, I know, like, one of the ones Murph was talking about, Chief Murphy, you know, access to the building, one of the things that went through my head when I saw that comment was, "Okay, if you're using the parking lot, you're gonna have to either make sure, that's why we need the specificity, that if there is something that happened to the building, God forbid, how do the fire trucks get there? Can you get access from Ford Place or from off?" I don't know, but I mean, that's the thing that has to be nailed down. Um, and the police chief, Stuart, was saying, you know, "Doesn't look like you need a detail, but, you know, two security persons you can get, but you might need, you do need to speak to Sergeant Gil Martin."
Okay.
Again, those are the things that, once they sign off on it, makes us feel much better about, "Okay, it's been vetted through, we're fine." So we're not saying no, and I don't want you to get the impression that by giving you this kinda like task, "Yes, we endorse this, let's go forward, we're gonna pull the rug from under you," no. But if it changes into something significantly from what you presented to us, then yeah, I, I could assume the board would say, "Wait a minute, that's not what you told us back then." And I'm not saying you're gonna do that, but you've gotta understand the position that we're coming from.
I understand, I definitely understand.
I was just gonna say, so, Kja, you have a little bit of time that you could get some of these concerns addressed, and then come before us, Israelis, next meeting, two meetings away.
Okay.
Plenty of time.
We all, we all wanna encourage you to keep going forward, because it's gonna need a lot of energy, you know, to, to make this happen.
Okay.
Be a great event, I mean, I said that from the get-go, for Green Bush, a defining event for the Green Bush section of town, I mean, it's great.
And let's understand the alcohol concept a little bit more to me, what's your thoughts there? You know, you've got a big area there to manage, I imagine, I don't know, we should do more of something, I don't know.
Probably the same format that we do at Heritage Days, we'll have security guards and...
Yeah, but Heritage Days is just on your patio, so this area is probably 10, 15 times bigger.
Yep.
So it's a bigger thing, but I think it's gonna be great. So why don't you get your stuff together and give us a plan, and then come back next meeting if you want, and we can talk about it more, and as we feel comfortable with it, we'll vote different components.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, um, oh, so that's, that's all three of them? Great. So now, um, the next item is an update on our Facebook page by David Giuliano. Who patiently sent that. You can front over there.
So, Lorraine, you wanna set this up since you did all the work?
David, tell us a little bit about you before you get into the actual Facebook page.
I go to Situate High School, um, I live at 466 Countryway, we just built a house...
What grade are you in?
I'll be a junior, and, uh...
And you adapted Facebook and what have you, and you're putting together a, a town Facebook page for us.
Right. So I'll be running the, um, official town Facebook page for the town of Situate.
Can you hear the lights, Ruth?
Yeah.
Probably because my computer's dying.
So David is working with me, and he's going to be taking care of updating the Facebook page. Initially, we'll be rolling it out as an informational Facebook page, so that we can post updates to the residents of Situate. A lot of people are using Facebook these days to get information, we wanna be able to have tools to provide quick and accurate information, um, so people will not be able to respond to these things at this stage of the game, we're just rolling out a little bit. And David put together, um, a page and some, some Facebook posts, he can tell you about this.
So, it'll be officially public after the meeting, and we've already got a few things up, just so that when people log on for the very first time, there's at least a few things up, there's a, um, a welcome post, which is further down, uh, just about the sloop, um, the beautification commission, and, um, again, I get the, we can put up, um, all the road closings and the delays and stuff, and it'll just be good for, it's gonna be right away, right when it's announced, people will be able to tell, instead of logging on to the website and stuff, it's just a lot faster. And, um, we also put together a schedule for, from now until December, of each week, a different department head will have something that'll go up, that's just something they want the town to know about, and, um, we've already got posts scheduled and ready for the next couple of weeks, along with what they just regularly send in, anything they wanna put up, so...
So who will be managing the content?
Um, I get the emails, and I kinda convert it to Facebook format, and then I send it to Lorraine, who checks it, gives it, gives it back to me, and then...
So you'll be the one actually updating the content?
Right.
Okay. I think it's great, I think we're all understanding that the, that this is a, a major source of communication for the world today and for the town, and, um, I think it's great that we do it, I think it's important that Lorraine said that it's a one-way communication, there's not gonna be, um, banter back and forth on different topics, other websites can do that, and this is strictly informational, so that we can get information out to as many people as quickly as possible. So, I would encourage people to not like it, but join it, how do you...
You like it, yeah.
Like it, okay, like it?
Yeah.
Flip in or something, and...
Let's add one thing, you know, we wanna make sure that people understand that this does not replace the website. For example, water supply meetings, you know, meeting agendas and minutes and things that people are interested in, this does not replace that, those things will not be on the Facebook page, they will continue to stay in the process we have on the town of Situate. So, one of the posts that David's gonna be posting is, "How do I subscribe to the town of Situate website to get the information about meetings and important notices and events and things like that?"
So, Facebook is really for a block of information, but like you said, it's not replacing all the information, all the dates, all the phone numbers, everything that's on the town website, this is really a fast way for us to get information out to people that are open to media.
This is to bring the town of Situate into social media arena.
Right. Donna?
Um, how do you fund this? Is there a fund to keep it going?
It's free, yeah.
Well, we're paying David, but, um...
So there's a little expense, wanna make a profit? Can you sell advertising space? John was thinking about advertising.
You can actually, you can buy advertising on the Facebook, like, for the page, but, and I'm sure you could put local companies on there.
Yeah, no, but seriously, I mean, why, why...
I mean, there's a fund right here for a local business.
We, we will have a conversation about that, we're a municipality, so...
More?
Lorraine or David, what is your plan for backup? So right now, the process is, um, on a daily basis, folks will email you the content, right, David?
Yeah.
And you'll send it over to Lorraine, Lorraine approves it, gets, it gets posted, correct?
Yeah.
Um, you go on vacation, you, you know, are looking at colleges, whatever that may be that you do in the next couple of years, what's our backup?
We'll back each other up.
Okay, so then, folks will just email you directly?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause it's great, thank you for taking all the time to develop that, it looks great, and, uh, I just, you know, I know people have great expectations for Facebook posting, so I just wanna make sure that we're current, you know, it's, it's so I just wanna make sure that we're current, you know, it's up to date. You know, David, you do it daily as a kid, so, um, just to make sure there's a nice streamlined process in place.
David can talk to you about some of the things we have planned that we met with Tricia earlier. Did you know, you know, unusual facts about Citute? We'll be putting some, posting some of those, right, David?
Yeah, we have a list of fun facts and we wanna, um, however it comes to us, get pictures of events and stuff. And, uh, like, we already have a post ready about the golf course and how it's easy to get there from the sloop.
Oh, great.
I would imagine most of the content is gonna be coming from this building. So this is a quick way for Kevin to tell the town that there's a water main that just broke on First Parish.
That, that's really the purpose of it, um, to have, and I, you know, I give a lot of credit to Lorraine, cause I'm like, I wanna do this thing, sort of like everything you just said. And, um, so she, you know, I said, "Oh, and I wanna do this." And she says, "No, you don't do that." And I said, "Fine, let's just find someone." So she interviewed, she put an ad in the high school and we interviewed folks. And she hired Davids and we had great folks. Um, because my real concern is, in eight months, you may not be able to drive a straight line in this town between the water main pipes, the library, the public safety building, the school. And this is gonna be daily, real-time information. So that on Friday, you'll know exactly what's going on next Monday in terms of road construction. But David's also gonna be like an, our intrepid reporter as well. He's gonna go out and talk to people and post something. And, and, you know, we're gonna profile town employees. We're gonna profile departments about something they wanna do. So it's gonna be a social, um, vehicle for us to get stuff. And to let people know a lot about town operations that they might not even be aware of.
Sometimes we get a lot of calls into town hall about concerns people have. So we were talking about having a topic of the week. Which maybe respond to a lot of the calls we're getting that week about particular items.
Which is a great idea. I mean, I think we're being proactive in dealing with the way that people are communicating today. And whatever channels we have to use, you have a Twitter account, that you have hundreds of followers. If we can get thousands of people that like to look at things on Facebook, it's a great way to say, "The shark sighting has been taken care of and the beach is now open." And getting thousands more people to see that information. Because only so many people look at their email and only so many people will look at their blast or get their reverse nine-one-one calls.
And you know, for short money, you can promote it and instantly reach most of the residents in town by going out and promoting it to about, you know, a thousand Facebookers for like $10. So it's a very easy, quick way to get it out there in front of the, all the residents.
Yeah, and we have a, an ad in The Mariner and, uh, an email to the residents and the department heads.
So that all gets, you're the first to see it. Like David said, it's going live after this meeting. The blast is going out, the tweet's going out, so everybody will, will know about it.
It's great. Thank you.
So the things that posts, like, you would put on Facebook, a lot of the things that you brought up, an example of Kevin Cafferty having an issue in town, that would still go to the town website, right?
It still will. Yeah, it's gonna do both.
There are a lot of people that don't do Facebook, believe it or not, I know.
It's gonna do both. So now, um, what happens when there's a blast that needs to be done, it comes to me and Bill. Now it's gonna go to Bill, me, and David, or Lorraine.
Okay, perfect.
It will all be at the same time.
So it's more of another outlet, really?
Yep.
Great. David, thank you, good job. And, uh, we will hear back from you and hear statistics. We wanna know how many people are, were linked to and, uh, all that fun stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, David.
You can just think, I'll just shut it.
And Lorraine, thank you for, for that.
Thank you very much for coming in too.
Okay, moving on to the next item is, uh, Veterans Cemetery, Cremation Garden contract.
That would be postponed, it'll be generic.
Don, do you wanna deal that one or?
No, I'm good on that.
We'll postpone that one.
Yeah, certainly.
And we will deal with Don Knapp, dealing with the Citute Veterans Advisory Council charge. So we got a copy of that in the packet and we all read it. Why don't you give us a quick summary?
Uh, so what we did is we went back and we, we looked at the charge. Um, just wanted to update it. And, and that's what we, you have in front of you now and we just wanna present it.
Um, Marty, I know you worked on this as well. Any, any things you wanna point out on it?
Well, there's one thing that I, that I didn't notice before, but it, because of the, in the interest of time, um, it says officers will assume their duties in July. We just need to change that. And I don't know what we should change it to, because we're getting applications together now. Um, I don't know what we should look at.
I think it's okay, Ma, cause typically appointments take place in July, so this year will just be an aberration. Because that's really what you want it to be like in perpetuity.
Otherwise, you would've picked up on that, I'm sure.
So just, do you wanna give a quick summary of what it's, what is the purpose of it is and what the council is supposed to do? Or I can?
I don't wanna take Don's line way.
No, it's all right, you can go ahead. I mean, it's, I guess it's, uh, again, just to, to put the laws and the rules in effect to govern this and, uh, so we have the guidelines.
So we have between five and seven members that are all gonna be veterans.
Correct.
And if veterans don't apply, then we can have other people come in and fill those slots. And they're, um, they're gonna come in and they're gonna help you and they're gonna deal with outreach to the community in terms of veteran services. They're gonna deal with, um, holidays and festivities that go from Memorial Day, Fourth of July Flag Day, Veterans Day, all that sort of stuff. They're gonna be kind of your eyes and ears out to the community so that you can advise them and they can advise you in terms of, you know, it's kind of that, um, connection between you and the rest of the community with these veterans. So it's really a team that works together to get, to take the department that's already expanded tremendously in the last three or four years to the next level.
Correct.
That's how I read it, is that what?
Yeah, I mean, and that's exactly it. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, uh, events that go on. It'd be great to have another, um, personnel there to assist me in that. Um, because of the inflow, influx of, um, claims, federal claims, state claims coming in. Um, so this helps. Um, this way, we don't drop, you know, uh, the ball on the events and we have someone there representing me and the town. And it'd be great.
Great. So there, hopefully the group will support each other and advance stuff. Yes, Ma?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do have a question. Is there a reason why or would you consider allowing one position to be a non-veteran? Or is it mandated by the mass general law that everybody on this council has to be a veteran?
Uh, no, and that's why the clause right underneath it said, if there were...
There's one...
Right, if, right.
Basically, though, right?
Absolutely.
So if you, all five, um, folks that come forward that wanna be a part of it are veterans, there's no chance for anybody else who may have a greater skillset in marketing and veteran outreach to, um, be considered? Cause I just think of that fabulous candidate that came before us two weeks ago, Aubrey Burke, who works in veterans outreach today in marketing, but I don't believe she was a veteran herself. Um, so I don't know if we would consider being flexible for one position to allow that. Um, because I think there are some folks that have some great skillsets out there that want to help veterans and veterans councils like yourself, yet have some time and have some specific expertise to lend. That, that was my only thought.
My, my question was...
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Chapter four, section seven, clause forty-three of the general laws. Does it mandate under the statute that all members have to be veterans? That's, that I didn't have an answer to.
That, I mean, it's again, um, something for interpretation there. I, I, again, that's why the clause underneath came in, to give us that leeway there.
If we didn't get enough veterans.
Is that, is that just the law that defines what a veteran is?
What a veteran is.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So it just, exactly.
Right.
Again, that states, you know, um, black and white, what, what, under veteran, what...
So what if we were to change the majority or the three-quarters of the members, um, shall be veterans? So the majority of the veterans of the committee, committee would be veterans. I mean, I understand what you're saying, Ma, and I, I was trying to figure out, cause of that one candidate that...
Okay, just to give us some flexibility, cause this basically says, nobody can be considered unless...
Again...
Well, a veteran doesn't submit.
Again, there is there and that's, I think that's why we leave that door open for the board, again, to make that decision, um, based on the candidates. Um, I wasn't, I don't think it's closing the door on that.
Okay.
Well, I think, go ahead, Sean. Would you be opposed to that?
Would I?
I think, the way I read it was, if you're, if you have ten veterans that wanna do it, then they fill the slots and a non-veteran couldn't do it.
Correct.
Um, the one thing I will bring up is, it's an open meeting. So if somebody wanted to get involved, they may not have a vote, making decisions, but they certainly can get involved and be involved in the marketing and all that sort of stuff.
That's a good point.
I like John's idea, though, if we can open it up to the discretion to get at least one slot open that somebody may have relevant, um, background, but not been a veteran.
Yeah, just have flexibility with one slot, I think would be helpful.
Could you do it, John, through supermajority? I think that's the phrase. Supermajority shall be veterans?
But even this says...
So that's more than a quarter, it's a supermajority.
Yeah. But say only three veterans applied. The way it reads now is you could have four non-veterans.
No, the way it reads now is you can't appoint any non-veterans unless you're a veteran.
No, it says unless there's a slot available, then you can put a non-veteran.
Right, but if there, if there's a slot available, that's assuming there is.
That's what I'm saying, if only three veterans wanted to be on this commission...
Then you still have four, three vacancies. I read that, if, you know, they're veterans and you still have vacancies.
Anytime vacancies not be filled under provision, additional non-veterans may be appointed to the council.
Yeah.
By the Board of Selectmen at its sole discretion, as long as there are no veterans desirous and willing to be on the council. I mean, if you can't get veterans to be on it, then it probably isn't the committee that we wanna have. So...
Good point.
So if someone can think of some language to add one veteran spot there, then...
I mean, again, under the membership too, though, it does, again, leaves that open for something like that. If, if we said initially five with a max of seven, with a max of seven. So what we're looking for is at least five. So if that's where we had to leave it because of that, I mean, if we want to keep those ratios there, you have the leeway to do that.
Okay, we go up to six, so go up to seven.
Any, do we wanna pursue, I mean, I can come up, we can all come up with a sentence to add.
Can't you say the majority of members, with the exception of the Board of Selectmen's member appointee, shall be veterans as defined? Can't you just say that? Or is that not, is not, not definitive enough to my fellow lawyers on the board?
Attorney Harris? Maybe we could just add a sentence that the board has the discretion to add one member that is a non-veteran.
It basically says that already. It says that.
Where's it said?
It's already covered. In other words, at the discretion of the board, they don't have to be...
Before it says, "If it cannot be filled under provision above."
I was thinking under paragraph, the second paragraph of page two, but I just, instead of saying "All members with the exception of the Board of Selectmen's member appointee shall be," uh, I'd just say, "Six of, uh, six of the members, six of the, seven members, something like that" language, "shall be veterans."
Yeah.
So if you just said it there, but, you know, why don't we do this?
Well, postpone it.
Postpone it at the next meeting and take a look at the language and just quickly modify it and then shoot it back to everybody. How's that sound?
Great.
Does that work?
Is this stopping anything from happening?
At the next meeting? It's fine. Does that work? It's fine.
Okay. Everyone agree with that? Sounds good.
Yep.
Okay. So, Lorraine, can you try and get a sentence in there that allows the selectmen to put one non-veteran on there?
Sure.
Good job?
Good.
Uh, great, so that's it. And if we find it reads that way now, then maybe we just have to clean up some of the words and... I don't read that.
I, I think, I think what I'm thinking of, the one, the one phrase in there that says that is, again, I think that's just because of the liaison, that'd be Marty.
Which one you, you're thinking?
That you, you already have that, that one of them would be, uh, a non-veteran. And that would be the, the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen liaison, right, yeah.
But he didn't get a vote.
Right. Again, that's what I'm, I was just thinking that's what's in there, so, yeah.
Yeah, me too.
I, I think the easiest way to do it is, is like I said, tweak that one sentence that says, where it says, "All members with the exception of the Board of Selectmen's member appointee," that's liaison, "shall be veterans." We'll just say, uh, at a minimum, six of the seven shall be veterans.
Or four of the five. See, that's where it gets a little confusing, because a minimum of five voting members.
Or supermajority.
So, let me offer a friendly amendment and say, at all times, a supermajority of the council shall be veterans.
That's what you said before, right?
A supermajority means a quorum is three out of five, but a supermajority is four out of five.
Four out of five.
But if it's seven, or it's five, or it's six, you just have to say, "Supermajority," which means it'll out, yeah.
Okay. It could be two less.
Yeah, depending.
That's the language.
So, but regardless, we have to change this other paragraph?
Put that in and then...
So let's, uh, let's postpone it till next meeting and we'll get that cleaned up.
Sounds good.
Kevin?
Thank you for doing that.
The last thing is that we have to wish the Coast Guard happy birthday today.
I was gonna say, isn't that their birthday today?
Hundred and fifty-five.
Two fifty-five, yeah.
Wow.
Yep.
And how many years did you serve? Two hundred and fifty?
Don is our...
It's starting to feel that way.
Is there a proper way to do that, Don? You wanna, is there a chant that the Coast Guard did that maybe you wanna do right now?
Semper Prasensum, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, great.
Always ready.
Happy birthday, Coast Guard.
Thank you, Chris Stone.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin, we have some contracts.
How can we talk that?
Be hard. We'll beat up your language too.
That's okay. I meant about the Coast Guard's birthday.
Oh, right.
Need some flexibility.
Solar flare.
I'll, I'll let Sean explain this and we'll talk about the solar flare.
As you know, there is a, uh, utility flare located at the landfill now, um, that's used to burn off methane gas that's produced underneath the capped landfill. That's been in service for about fifteen years now. The flare has diminished over the last five or six years with, um, not only a reduction in the quality of methane that's being produced, but the components themselves are starting to deteriorate. The company the flare was purchased from, um, is no longer in business, nor do they have supplies here in America to replace parts. We've looked at replacing some of the components using US parts, UL-listed parts, because the flare that exists now, manufactured by Organixx, was produced in the UK. Just the panel itself, um, the electrical panel, had a cost of $72,000 for replacement. That would also require other adjustments be made to the flare to handle the low volumes or the low quality of methane, um, now produced. So this contract, uh, would be for SCS, uh, Field Services Engineers of Taunton, Mass, to provide, um, a complete flare and blower system, um, to replace the existing flare. This flare will handle those low-flow gases. It'll have an automatic, um, relight. So when the flows are low, um, when they do increase, or if we do get winds from the coast, it will relight without needing a person to relight it. I know we've had some problems with the flare that we have now, um, needing to be manually lit. And that's twelve feet in the air.
Go up there with a torch and say, "Light it."
With a, with a two-by-four and a rag in the past. I won't mention any names.
I've seen one of those little clicker lighters for the... Little thing, his arm's gonna be singed.
I wouldn't even like my gas grill, so...
It's like a big gas grill, no matter where you are, it goes.
So at what point is the methane gonna be so low that we don't have to worry about burning?
Well, I did speak with the EP about, and that would put that landfill in a passive system, um, where the gases no longer need to be burnt.
We're not there yet?
Or migrate, um, off-site. Right now, this will draw in and I will be back in before the board to update, um, some of the collection system that needs to be replaced as well. Um, we can get this flare up and running, but there is underground piping that'll need to be replaced to get the gas to the flare. Some of it's okay, some of it needs to be replaced, so I'm working on that, um, right now. But this is all to stay in compliance with the EP as well. Um, right now, we can't allow that to vent naturally. They do expect improvements made to the system over the years as well. And I think very few have been made in the fifteen years.
How old is it?
Fifteen years for this flare.
Only fifteen?
Yeah, two thousand.
No, but how old is the landfill's been close?
I think they started, yeah, in ninety-nine, ninety-eight, they started the capping, the files that I looked at. And then the flare went up around two thousand.
And it was done.
So why, can I ask?
Go ahead, yeah.
Why are we replacing the piping if it's only fifteen years old?
Because of the settlement, the, the way the landfill was designed and all the piping is beneath the cap, there are, um, collection wells scattered all over the well. The header system that connects those pipes to the vacuum, that the flare draws the methane from the whole site, are settling, but the wells are not. So the pipes are settling, but the wells they connect to aren't.
So they're pushing down the piping that connects it?
We spoke about putting the field up there. The big problem was it was continually settling and we'd have holes up there. And it still, it still continues to settle.
Does the materials break down? So those pipes are starting to disconnect from the collection well?
Mr. Harris?
The only other question I have, and I talked to Kevin about the survey, is to get some clarification. Are we not burning the flare because of hardware problems or the quality of the methane? I guess I didn't ask that. Or both?
Both, both. The, the, the quality of methane has deteriorated, depleted, and also the gathering of it. Um, right now, it's not producing what that flare was designed to burn. So it constantly wants to blow out until that reaches that certain level that that flare will burn.
Do you have to introduce some natural gas to it to keep it burning? Or when the methane gets to the point where it won't ignite, the flame goes out? And then if it, how, how does that work?
And this will reignite.
Automatically?
Automatically. This will have an automatic solar, you know, spark reignition. It won't need a technician to get it going again.
How long will they stand behind their hardware? You know, their stuff? How long will they stand behind their hardware, you know, their stuff? One year, five years, ten years?
Certainly, I don't know.
Yeah, no, if we could find that out, that would be...
I know, in fact, I received a reference check from this company, from another town who has the same flare.
Right.
In need of replacement.
Okay.
Right now. So they're at the same point we are.
And just when it, when it first, when it first lit it off, I had asked and looked into it, asked for a game, or looked into it, find out if we could do something about it, but there just wasn't enough quality gas to make it worthwhile. We don't have enough good garbage that I dump. We have more C and D.
Crummy garbage?
Well, no, I mean, you want, you know, it's a lot of garbage. I mean, certain landfills have a higher methane content than others, I guess.
Depending upon what they were taking in.
Right. And at the end, we brought, we opened up the doors to a lot of people to bring C and D to get our landfill capped in a hurry because it was do or die. We had to cap it by a certain time, whether it was up to its capacity or not.
Any other questions? It's expensive, and this is only part of the project. Who's gonna pay for this?
Uh, the transfer station. This is out of a repair and maintenance budget.
And we have to do it, right?
It is a D.E.P. compliance. Yeah, yeah. And they're, they're aware of the situation long before now that maintenance needed to be done up there. However, that was handled.
So at some point, it could be dangerous if gas leaks out in certain spots where it's not supposed to, right?
It'll migrate underground.
Yeah, right.
That's why we have all the wells around there to monitor if it's migrating. The big issue now is, and not to cut you off, Sean, it's just, it's flowing free flow, you know, it doesn't light, so sometimes it flows free flow. So you could, which isn't dangerous, it's done in Europe and everything else, but it's against our permit, and it could be problematic in the future if we don't fix it.
Does this amount include training?
Yes.
Okay.
And odor, supposedly, although I don't think the odor's very bad up there any longer. But that's another reason to burn it.
Motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for the installation of a landfill gas solar spark utility flare to SCS Field Services of Taunton, Mass. for ninety-four thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second? Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. The next contract is the disposal of brie at the transfer station, debris, sorry. Not the cheese.
Cheese.
This is for, yes, our C and D hauling contract at the transfer station.
And disposal.
And disposal, correct, yes. Collection, hauling. We did put out a bid to solicit prices for this. There wasn't a whole lot of interest from the people that either notified us through the newspaper. We ended up reaching out to several others to try to get competitive pricing. A lot of people would haul for us if we wanted. A lot of people asked that they could handle it, if we could get it there. We don't have our own trailers at the transfer station. The price has gone up, ten dollars a yard compared to last year with the same vendor. He's been extremely reliable over the past two years anyways. When we've called him for other occasions, he's responded very quickly. We do have in our contract that if we do call them before noon, we receive an empty trailer that day, which may be demanding for, for some vendors to manage.
How long is the contract?
It would be a year.
One year?
Yeah.
Sean, is that...
Yes, Kevin and I had a little discussion on this, and Kevin's gotta go out and try to solicit some other people to handle it as well as transport it. Sean's absolutely right, this is a very reliable company. Prices might be a little higher, you know, but it's like everything else, they have gone up. It's getting harder to handle this material. This is not clean construction demolition. This is what they call hard-to-handle waste. If it was clean C and D, you probably would get a better price, but things that, and I don't go to the Citro transfer station that much at all, so I don't know, but I have a pretty good idea. If people put the stuff in the tank and leave it, correct me if I'm mistaken, it sits there and sits there, and ends up going in this trailer here. That can be everything from three-legged chairs, which aren't that bad, but it's the plastic toys and pools and all that sort of stuff. That's the stuff that gets difficult. When it goes to these places like NER, they're down Lopes, they're down Taunton, they try to extract anything that can be recycled. It's ground up, the wood is ground up, and it's used for cap, cover, maybe used for mulch, depending on the quality of it.
Pellets. The pellets for the pellets, though, they make.
Yeah, that too, and I've questioned that, but this, it's, it'd be great if that's, if it could come back as all pellets, but...
So is this the blue bags, or is this just the stuff?
No, no.
So this is just the stuff we put the red or yellow?
The other stuff.
Over the scale, we charge a hundred and twenty dollars.
And the red and the, and the red and the yellow dumps, right?
This is, if you did your own doors and windows at your house, for example, you've got to put in your trailer or something, any, any one of them.
The elements.
You know, so I say, I don't, I'm not familiar with colors or anything, but it goes around to, oh, have you got a trailer, and then it gets sent out. So that's the reason this stuff is real attractive to some of these people.
And this contract, I believe, is renewable for two years, so it would actually be potentially a three-year contract that could go out for that price.
If we mutually agree.
At that rate?
At that rate.
Okay.
They currently have the contract now, I think Sean said that.
They do, yeah.
So just the C and D, not the MSW.
Mm-huh.
And that's all?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award a contract for the disposal of construction and demolition debris to NERS New England Recycling of Taunton, Massachusetts for ninety-one dollars per ton.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. And the last one is purchase of a truck. A dump truck?
Of course.
Actually, yeah.
Okay. The second, the last one is?
Yep, we have one more. This is, um, this is for the replacement of truck one-four from the Highway Department. It's been plowing and sanding for fifteen years. It's pretty well rusted out. It was on the capital plan. It was viewed by everybody in capital advisory and passed at town meeting to get this truck replaced. The Highway Department has gone out and solicited quotes and got prices, and this is the truck they've come back with. It's a Dodge 5500 that they were able to find off the state bid list as a dump truck with a Cummins turbo diesel. And they seem to be pretty happy with it.
What did we figure it at, Kevin?
I think we had sixty.
Okay.
From capital.
Good.
Kevin, is this Tony?
Yep, Lorraine.
Just dump truck, no plow, no sander, just a dump truck?
I believe it's just a dump truck with all the hydraulics and everything set up for it.
Central hydraulics?
Yep.
Any other questions?
Motion? Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award a contract for the purchase of a 2014 Dodge Ram 5500 dump truck to Salvador Auto Group for a contract amount of fifty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Second? Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And the last one is contract for a Phase II-C water main replacement.
Yes. And because we were talking about trucks, hopefully it's here ready in time, I don't know if it would be, but Truck Day is the twenty-eighth this year, where we have everybody out on the front lawn with all the kids and make the popcorn for...
One sec. I'm sorry.
No.
Just made me think of it. Have we replaced the one that caught fire inside?
We have not.
So we, that'll be coming up pretty soon, right?
That'll be coming up. We've, I've been talking to the insurance company, they've offered us a value on it. We were going back and forth a little bit on what the value is. They're not offering us a lot of money for the truck, but we're, we're looking at it still.
Right, okay.
Surprise, surprise.
So this is the water mains down Captain Pierce, Dreamwald, Orchard, Lawson, Bossy, Branch, Garden, Holly, a total of three-point-four-four miles of main water replacement.
Correct, and we brought a drawing in here. It's kinda hard to see, but the areas in orange, right here, we did orange and red, but the areas in orange are the pipes that we're replacing on this contract here.
That's three miles?
Um, there's some other smaller areas, but yes, it adds up to, I think, three-point-four-four miles.
Up by Citu, towards the lighthouse.
Yeah, yeah.
So what are those streets you're doing right there?
The ones in the middle. So what's, that, that one is First Parish, right? The Cross Street?
Well, you have Captain Pierce, that's...
That looks like Damon Road and Citu Ave.
Yep, that's one of the sections, right?
Mm-huh.
The background's correct, Kevin, right? Captain Pierce Street.
Correct, correct. The background's exactly correct. We just, we put it on the drawing just so it'd be representative for when we talk about the rates.
So that's Country Way coming this way.
Yeah, Country Way's coming down towards you.
And Captain Pierce.
And you've got Branch right by the library there, in here, in here, and some of those there, Lawson.
Curtis.
And you've got a small section up there, I believe, two sections right there. What we did is we just picked small, we added it all up. It's the conglomerate of streets just so that we could get enough for a, for a contract to do.
Just one quick question jumped out at me. When we get to Captain Pierce, when the train came by, we put new water mains under the tracks.
No, we did not.
We had the choice to, and the decision was made to decline it.
Yes.
Why? I think we did.
We did not.
No, you're right, we did not.
It was...
I thought it went up to North Citu, though.
No, well, that did. That, that would, I'm talking about perpendicular to the tracks, not parallel.
Oh, oh, right.
And it wasn't until it broke on Beaver Dam Road that we fixed it after it broke.
Yep.
So how, how will they handle that? No problem? They can tunnel under it like they tunnel under 3A?
Fortunately, what we did is when that was under there, the T left us a sleeve, so there should be a sleeve underneath there. We have to find that sleeve.
Using with the company?
Yes. I'm, I have an idea where the sleeve is. I hope it's changed a little, and so hopefully we find the sleeve easily and we get the pipe through. But I remember the discussions, they did not want to replace it at the time.
I did.
It wasn't, it wasn't the Board of Selectmen.
All right. If no other questions, have a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for Phase II-C water main replacement to KR Resendis of Assonet, Mass., contract number fifteen-wa-ten-b for a contract amount of two million nine hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
I think it's Assonet.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Assonet, Mass.
So that's how we stayed up in Vermont.
Second by Mr. Harris. Any other pronunciation?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Okay, that is it. Next up is Nancy Holt, and we're gonna talk about...
Gas.
This one is more gas.
We're keeping with the whole contract thing.
Gassy night.
Having so much fun. Stick with it.
Would you like to start, or would you like me to?
Sure. We were notified by the State Procurement Office, the OSD Operational Services Division, that the state contract for gas and diesel was coming up for renewal as of the end of July, and that the current vendor, Global Montello Group, was no longer going to be the vendor for our area, and actually is no longer gonna be the vendor at all for that contract. So they have established two new contracts, and the vendor for our area is Dennis K. Burke. And what you have before you tonight is a contract to award to Dennis K. Burke for gas and diesel for the coming fiscal year. It's a one-year contract. And in the backup information we provided to you, we showed you approximately how much money has been spent over the last three years, and it's arranged in the mid to high, three hundred thousands, and one year when the rates were exceptionally high, it was over four hundred thousand. Thank you very much.
Great. Any questions? So this guy's the low bidder now in this area. He has our con, he has our...
Yeah, I think he's got the entire state for gas and five out of seven regions for diesel, whether reversed.
Any questions? Have a motion.
Move to award a contract for the purchase of gasoline pursuant to state contract ENE forty-one and ultra-low sulfur diesel pursuant to state contract ENE forty to Dennis K. Burke of two-eighty-four Eastern Ave, Chelsea, Mass. for the period of August first, two thousand fifteen, through July thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, for the total sum not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
No, it's not. I'm gonna abstain.
It's unanimous with one extension.
Mr. Harris? Next.
The next item is water usage, excuse me, our water rate increase.
So what we have before you tonight is to set the fiscal sixteen water rates, and as has been done in the last two years, there is a proposed increase to the rates to cover the debt service for the twenty-two million dollar water pipe replacement project. In June, the bond that was awarded by the board included fourteen million dollars, so we have known costs for the bulk of the, or two-thirds of that project, plus the four hundred thousand dollar planning piece of that project. We also provided to you estimates of what the final eight million will cost at an estimated rate of four-point-two-five percent. We will certainly continue to look for money through the state revolving fund, the Clean Water Trust, but we were refused for that. That's why the first fourteen million went under a general obligation bond. We'll try again, and hopefully there'll be some free space for us in the next one. The amount of the increase that's being proposed is nineteen-point-five percent. Last year, it was nineteen-point-two percent.
So you said there was no cost for the fourteen million, did you mean bonding cost?
I'm sorry.
You said there was no cost for the four, initial fourteen million?
Oh, no, there's a cost for the initial fourteen million.
To a no.
But we now know what our costs are. They're no, we're no longer estimating interest rates.
I think you said it's a known cost now.
Known, okay, great.
Yeah, the enunciation's going down as the, the meeting goes on.
Great. So it's a ninety percent increase, which we had, we knew we were getting into that when we, when we bid off this project. On your spreadsheet here, I'm a little confused on this, where it's twenty-five years, but it doesn't even, it's only halfway done at that point.
It's a twenty-five-year term bond for the fourteen-point-four million that's been issued.
Oh, so the interest expense in that final year is five sixty-six, one hundred?
That's the total principal and interest, five sixty-six, one hundred, in that final year.
And that's paid off?
Yeah.
Okay. That's not the remaining balance.
And we did provide you with the average annual bills based on the time bond survey of water rates for two thousand fourteen, to show that even with this increase, Citu is still kind of the middle of the road.
Actually, we're third highest.
Fourth, but yeah.
Or fourth.
But it is much lower than the...
Right.
Than the high, high ones.
And we also gave you the rate changes. A lot of these communities have not done any rate changes in years, and one of them hasn't had a rate change since two thousand nine. So that's gonna be a painful rate change when that comes down the pike.
So I guess the question that we're all thinking is, is this the last year that rates are gonna go up nineteen percent to pay for this?
One more.
There'll be one more year. It may not be next year. It would be the, the year when we have that final piece of the debt coming onto the debt service schedule.
So there's one more piece after this?
The final eight million.
So that's phase three. Okay, I got, great. So phase three, this other column here.
So we'll reevaluate it next year to see where our rates are, and maybe that's something where we can moderate it, so there won't be another really large increase.
Right. Any questions?
Do you have what the delta was last year from the first time we raised it?
Yeah, it was approximately five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
I'm sorry. I should've asked that better. On the, on the average water bill?
Ninety dollars.
Okay, so we're about the same. Okay.
Yep.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to increase the water service and usage rates by nineteen-point-five percent effective for fiscal year two thousand sixteen?
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Also, it should be known that the nineteen percent not only goes to this project, but it's also all the other work that we're doing. Because prior to this year, we used it five percent a year to do the INI work and to do, you know, the other...
And we'll continue to be doing our capital projects.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
And just for a point of view, over the past five years, we put in red there what we've done for water line throughout town, just so, you know, you get a feel for what's going on.
We've done all the red?
That's completed?
Yes.
Yep.
All the red's completed?
Yep.
Completed. The orange is about to start up.
Can you get that on TV?
You can put it on a Facebook page.
I was gonna say, put it on Facebook.
Great.
That's great information, 'cause there are a lot of new residents that have moved into town that don't understand, they weren't here for that initial vote, and they don't understand the scope of the project. So that's great information to share.
And do you have a, a map of like the proposed, not the proposed, the final phasing, which is gonna be next year?
I, I do. Actually, I can let a little bit out of the bag. Oceanside Drive is a big section that we have to do. We have to go all the way down in Dupatta Turner. There's a bunch of small streets that are off that, there's some small streets in Minnetonka. So that'll be one of the big contracts will be Oceanside Drive. We just have to phase that correctly and see how it affects the seawall project, if it does at all. The second big one is going to be, we have to replace the water line underneath the rotary and down one-twenty-three. That's ancient and honorable.
Up towards?
Towards Norwell on one-twenty-three. And actually, the line that goes underneath And actually, the line that goes underneath the rotary itself is over 100 years old.
Wow.
So that's going to be tricky and I'm already trying to plot how we do that. If we could maybe swing that over a different section of 3A and bring it up or if we jack a pipe across or looking at different options of what we could do and the most cost-saving.
The state would have to say, I'm sure, right?
We would have to get state permits to do it, obviously. And we just crossed 3A right out here when we went across. It was a big...
One eventful, didn't it?
Yeah. It went pretty good, I think, because on the permit, I've already talked to Jim Cantwell. I think they want us to pave from the rotary down to the Cohasset line because they let us cross.
Oh, that's not bad.
No, you know, they just... They have huge sections.
Cohasset? No.
Oh, we're working with them. We're not going to...
They didn't make Comcast repave when they cut the cable line from the rotary all the way to the Marshfield line.
They did or they didn't?
Well, that's the gas line.
Yeah, the gas line, I mean, yeah.
That needs to be paved.
Yeah, that needs to...
But that's not up to us, like Tricia just said.
No, but who contacts...
I think it's Division 5?
It's District 5, yes.
District 5, I mean. Can we contact them and ask them to get that?
Yeah, Jim's at...
Start this week to that repair.
Jim's trying to put together a meeting with the district engineer for 5.
Yeah, and we'll bring that up next time we talk to them.
So what about the other streets that really still need a coat of, you know, asphalt to get the rose level?
The ones that were dug up?
Yeah.
They're doing it. They're doing it now.
It's a good day to bring up because we just ground it all up. We're going to be paving tomorrow. So thank you for letting us praise about that.
But it's just saying the streets will be perfect by Friday.
Not all of them. The ones that we did the year before that people have been suffering with.
Let me say this. I went down Halley Road. John and Marty will know exactly what I'm talking about. If it stays the way it is, what they repaved is better than what was there. So I mean, what used to be really bad, they did a good job.
Really nice job.
If it doesn't settle again, so that's...
Which end? The end towards...
44 to the lights.
To Turner.
Basically, right?
To Turner, yeah.
First, they...
Maury, you're thinking probably further up towards Manheim. That's kind of...
They haven't gotten that far?
No. No, I'm with you. I have my different opinion.
They're doing that tomorrow.
There's two section of Countryway. We're going to go up to about Huey Road and repave that and that hopefully is happening tomorrow. There's message boards and a lot of signs up to let that know, let everybody know.
I drove it today so I could figure out.
And but the other section was just the area that we put in. We have to let that settle for a year. It's been patched and then we'll come back and we'll regrind it and pave it.
And just so people know, you know, Kevin showed me a photograph of a piece of pipe that they took out, I don't know, maybe it was three weeks ago, where the pipe's what? An eight-inch pipe?
Yep.
And there's literally like a quarter of open space where water could go through. So not only is that... May not be a huge groundwater thing, but it's the pressure on the pipe and the risk that you have on the back pressure causing mains to break. You know, he brought up a good point to me that you have a break somewhere in a main. You only look at the area where it broke. You don't drill up 50 feet further to find out where it's actually closed up that caused the pressure to break the main back there. So it's really hard to detect these, you know, corroded arteries, so...
You saving some of these, the pipes?
We have a whole collection. Anybody that wants to see, we have a whole collection.
I ask that because I was in Cohasset about a month, two months ago and they preserved them in something. I was like, you want to see our pipes? They're worse than what they pulled up five years ago.
What if you did a table at your DPW day?
We usually do.
It's a great idea.
We lug them around a lot. We could do something.
No, put them on the table and show them.
And I even have a piece of old wooden water line that we dug up in the north end years and years ago, so...
See, actually, a picture of it in our capher.
Yeah. Oh, I've seen them in the office. Trust me. But it'd be nice for other people to see them.
Wooden water line from where?
North End of Boston. I dug it years ago.
So it went down here?
Great. So did we vote, Lorraine? I think we did, right?
Yep.
All right, get out of here.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
See you.
Nancy and Pam?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hi, Sean.
Good evening.
So we're going to talk about some interfund borrowing.
Yes. I'm here to request the approval for an interfund borrowing for stabilization in the amount of $1,300,000 for the following two projects. Article 4H of the annual town meeting held on April 9th, 2012 for the ESCO project, which was approved to improve the energy and efficiency of the town and school buildings. This project was authorized in the amount of $5,900,000. Phase 1 is now complete. Currently, there is authorized unissued balance of $3,200,000. Phase 2 of the project has been approved. Kevin Kelly, the Facilities Director, has provided me with the cash flow for the project. Nancy Holt has suggested that I borrow $800,000 to cover the costs through September of 2015. The other project is Article 22 of the annual town meeting held on April 14th, 2015 for shore protection, authorized in the amount of $500,000. Kevin Cafferty, Director of the DPW, has requested that this be borrowed for the repair and replacement of the Edward Foster Seawall.
So my only question is the 800 grand that's going to get some projects started, what project is that? Do we have a list of what that?
Yeah, you approved those, sorry, a couple of months ago, the streetlights and acquiring the streetlights and for some additional school and town projects, Nancy? I'm sorry.
The ventilation and the heating and ventilation in this building. I think the streetlights were alone a little over $600,000 to convert them, to purchase them and convert them to LED.
They were 774.
Yeah. That was before you... For the Phase 2.
Then we're not paying rent or something, right? Is that right?
We're currently paying rent, yes.
Right. We buy them, replace them, and then...
Save a lot of money.
Yes, right. Energy costs as well. Paying rent.
And then the other one is just the... That town meeting where we allocated $500,000 and it's going to the seawall project that is underneath that paper, right?
Yeah, that was the 2014 town meeting.
Edward Foster Road or the one on...
Opposite Marine.
No, this is the seawall on Edward Foster Road. It's a private seawall that we've gotten the easements far right across from the Maritime Center. It's one that we really, very, very glad we got the easement for.
It's an expensive one, a $1.3 million project.
Great. Any questions?
Motion? Move the Board of Selectmen approve the interfund borrowing request prepared by the treasurer collector in the amount of $1,300,000 for the forshore protection in Phase 2 of the ESCO project.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. The next one is to adopt a policy for the Federal Affordable Care Act.
Nothing says fun like discussing the Federal Affordable Care Act at 9 o'clock at night. We'll try to make this very simple. We're asking the Board tonight, Pam and I, to adopt a policy and procedures for the next phase of the Affordable Care Act. This act has been being rolled out over a period of years and this next phase is something that Pam and I went to a seminar in July to learn more about. The town of Situate is considered a large employer because we have more than 50 full-time employees. So there are fees that we are potentially... Or penalties that we are potentially going to be assessed under this part of the act if we don't comply. And one of the guidelines is that we need to offer insurance to all of our... At least 95% of our employees, full-time employees, to avoid penalties, which we already do under Master and Law Chapter 32B. We offer insurance, health insurance, to any employee that works 20 or more hours, regularly scheduled 20 or more hours. Under the Affordable Care Act, the description of a... Or definition of a full-time employee is any employee that works for 130 hours per month, which is about 30 hours per week. So it's actually higher than Chapter 32B. So there is a very low threshold here for us to have any type of liability. We don't think there are going to be that many employees. There may not be any employees that fall under this, but we need to specify how we're going to actually ascertain this information. We have to choose a look-back period of either three, six, nine, or 12 months. 12 months is the longest. That's what we're proposing to you tonight for your review. And then the look-back period, you look back for this full 12 months. So for us, it would begin January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015. You have to check all of your hourly employees, all of your employees, but specifically, you're looking at your hourly employees and make sure that anyone that is working more than 130 hours per month has been offered health insurance. They don't have to take health insurance. You just have to have offered it. If there is anyone, we've given ourselves in the policy three months to do that. That's the maximum amount of time to interpret this information. If there are any employees that should have been offered insurance because they've worked 130 or more hours, we need to make that offer to them. Again, they don't have to accept, but the offer would be for a one-year period called the stability period, which would be from January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016. So someone could be offered insurance and have to pay for the first three months and then for the nine months going forward. That's the way it would work. They don't have to take it through us. They could take it through the Health Exchange.
What if they're not employed here anymore?
If they're not employed here, we don't have to offer it.
So but don't we offer it to everybody anyways?
We offer it to anyone who's regularly scheduled 20 hours or more. So if you work 19 hours per week, you're not benefit-eligible and we would not offer you health insurance.
But if you work 130 hours a month?
You would be benefit-eligible and you would have already been offered it because you're more than 20 hours per week regularly scheduled.
So we shouldn't catch anybody?
The people we might catch will be substitute teachers.
Long-term substitute teachers.
Either a long-term substitute teacher that wasn't offered health insurance. Usually, if you have someone that's going to be covering like an entire maternity leave for one year, they'll be offered health insurance because they're going to be working full-time for that one year. But if you have a substitute teacher that's just a really good substitute teacher, especially they get called a lot, especially like the elementary schools, you've got all these schools that could potentially call this person, they might be working a lot more hours than you realize and that's someone that potentially could qualify.
Okay, so let's say we go do this analysis. We find that Mrs. Smith was a substitute teacher and we didn't offer insurance. She's still a substitute teacher, so what...
We have to make an offer of insurance.
So now we say, Mrs. Smith, you can have insurance, but how do you go backwards and do that back period?
They... You have to go backward. You have three months in which to figure out if this person should have been offered insurance and then you offer them one year's worth of insurance from January 1st to December 31st.
Forward.
Moving forward.
Going backward to January 1st. So assume that we take the...
So the analysis is going to be done with this year?
That's correct.
So you're not going to do the same analysis next year?
Yes, we do. Every year, we have to do this analysis. And this is just the analysis. We all... There's a whole reporting requirement that is far more onerous than this.
Do we have to do this?
Yes.
It's a penalty of $250 per employee per month that we do not make the offer of health insurance that we could be assessed. And you might say, well, that's less than if they picked up a family plan. The other issue is that we need to file paperwork showing that we've actually done this. Paperwork has to be filed with the IRS for every employee that's eligible and it has to list anyone that's covered, all of their covered dependents and their social security numbers. So say, you know, I have a family plan, I'm going to... You know, the 1099HC that you get currently from... For the state of Massachusetts tax return, this is a federal version. It looks almost like the 1099HC, but it lists all of your dependents and all of their social security.
So do they have to pay for the insurance? We offer it to them, but they still have to pay their percentage, right?
Yes.
Who's going to do all this?
This is going to have to be done from Pam's office. So we're hoping that there's some type of a consultant that comes forward that will help with this type of work.
Streamline it.
Yeah. Right now, our joint purchase agreement with Mayflower, Miss Hilt, Municipal Health Group, all that they will provide to us for $150 is they will give us monthly a roster of all of our subscribers, which we already have, but all of their dependents, which has got all of the spouses, kids, and social security numbers that we need for this form. Why it's not coming from the insurers like the 1099HCs are, we don't know. If there's somewhere down the line, if that's something that the insurers will do for us, that would be more helpful because the problem is we have to then match it up with the hours. So it's an unpleasant...
So does every municipality have to do this?
Every employer has to do it that has more than 50 full-time employers, public and private.
Starting now? Are we ahead of the curve?
No, we're actually lagging. Our look-back period will be January 1st through December 31st, but we just haven't adopted a policy as to how we're going to go about complying with the law.
The good part of it is lots of computer programs that towns have. Payroll people know that this has been coming. The person we now use now, CDS, Danny Berman, has started a program within payroll to adopt this policy. The other programs that we're looking at going forward to get an integrated system also have started to look into this also. So, you know, our payroll applications will be able to help us hopefully going back and going forward.
But you still have to go through the work.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the actual calculation of the look-back period and the hours is probably going to be the easy part. It's the compilation of the forms, which have to be filed by March 31st, the year following with the IRS, but given to the employee by January 31st with their W-2.
But if we don't have anybody, it won't be too bad.
Not for the reporting. The reporting, we have to give out to anyone that's out... To anyone that meets that threshold, which would be the bulk of our full-time... It would be all of our full-time employees and part of our part-time employees.
So you have to report everybody and say that no one was missed?
Right.
In one form per person.
Yeah. And like I said, if you've gotten, if you, your ten ninety-nine HC that you get from your insurer every year for the state tax return, it looks almost like that, exactly like that.
All right. Motion? Oh, you know, I did have one question, though. When you, in somewhere in here, in the language, it said that hours count if you're laid off.
Yeah, you can't, if someone's been given a layoff, you have to count that as time worked.
So if you lay somebody off for two months, that counts towards, how do you keep track of that?
With difficulty. Like I said, this, oh, keep in mind that the majority, this only applies to people who are working more than a hundred and thirty hours per month, per month, and we already offer to people who are working the equivalent of eighty hours per month.
No, no, but the a hundred and thirty, you've got to go back and add in layoff hours.
Yeah, but you're looking for just a small population that potentially this could affect.
Right.
Because all of your full-time employees and most of your part-time employees have already had the offer of health insurance, and even if they were laid off, they still have the ability to have COBRA.
Right, but you still have to do the calculation and find out...
Can I just answer the question of Tricia? Would a PI fall into this?
Yeah.
Sure.
They're employees.
I bet you the town side, there wouldn't be any.
I was going to say Rockford.
Magnum P.I.? What's a P.I.? What?
Permanent intermittent.
Oh, you didn't know that?
No.
Yeah, no, I thought you just...
Yeah, we have a couple.
I didn't either. I was thinking the same thing. Yeah, like private, I was like...
Permanent intermittents. They work for us part-time before they go to the academy.
You got me on the P.I. one.
It's because he's an attorney.
All right. Motion?
Motion.
All right. Hang on. We'll be back there. I move to approve the recommended policy and procedure for health insurance under the Federal Affordable Care Act.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. P.I.? All in favor?
Aye.
P.I.
And we'll be back before you.
It is unanimous.
I'm sorry, Chairman. We'll be back before you with an update on the Cadillac tax. That'll be the next phase. That'll come in, that'll affect us, and that'll be in two thousand eighteen.
The Cadillac tax?
Cadillac tax.
So don't buy Cadillacs?
Health insurance, it has a value that's more than the federal limit. It's one of the major funding features of the Affordable Care Act.
That's another Affordable Care Act.
About eighty-seven billion dollars. And as fast as people are figuring out loopholes, the IRS is revising the regulations and closing those loopholes. So it's not going, it's not supposed to go until after two thousand eighteen. It would be a forty thou, a forty percent excise penalty on the value of the plan above the federal limits. Right now, Mayflower has advised us that the only plans that potentially could qualify would be the PPOs. And it's not how much they cost, it's how much the actual value is, an actuarial value of the plan. So that's just things to come, more special things.
Looking forward to that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, new business. We have a one-day beer and wine license.
Mexico looks better than dinner.
Lavishly done. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to grant lavishly done a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on August fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, from six p.m. until ten thirty p.m.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Great. Now we are going to do the annual appointments. So if you go back to this sheet, Lorraine, if you can kind of walk us through this.
Sure.
So the first one is simply traffic rules and regulation. It is, Chief Elliott is no longer on it, and he's being replaced by Captain Cestito.
Yes.
So if we can have a motion to appoint Captain Williams Cestito...
Motion to appoint Captain Williams Cestito to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
I move to grant Silent Chef a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on August sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, from one p.m. to five p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great, now we are going to do the annual appointments. So if you go back to this sheet, Lorraine, if you can kind of walk us through this. So the first one is simply traffic rules and regulation. It is, Chief Elliott is no longer on it, and he's being replaced by Captain Cestito.
Yes.
So if we can have a motion to appoint Captain Williams Cestito...
Motion to appoint Captain Williams Cestito to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have two constables. Retired Police Chief Brian Stewart, Chief Stewart is the new one, and then a renewal is Donald Ladd. Can we have as many of these as we want?
Yes.
As we need?
We are trying to limit them.
How many do we have?
You had as much as seven at one point. You really don't need any more than three.
I've got it down to two.
Two or three.
How many do we have now?
How many do we have now? We have, we have a lot of people from out of town.
That, their term's going to expire, though, right?
We have five people.
Okay, well, we'll clean this up for next year. Why don't we appoint these guys and...
So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to do in-town only, and people who are serving the town's purpose and not being processed service.
Gotcha.
Move to appoint Brian Stewart as a constable.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Danny. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Donald Ladd?
Move to appoint Donald Ladd as the constable.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Any discussion? Say none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. The next one is the coastal advisory. So there are three open spots, and there's two possible people to fill those spots.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
You may.
So last meeting, we appointed Peggy Dinner, Dinger, and we put her in as the coastal resident.
Okay.
I would like to propose, you know, just because we're trying to fill these slots, but I think we could have a really nice committee with the candidates that have come forward. If we keep Peggy and put her in more as the business liaison, I think Frank would be a great inland representative, as long as he's stepping off the CPC liaison piece. He opens up some bandwidth there. And George certainly seems to fill that boating community piece as well. If we're in agreement to appoint George and Frank tonight, I'd also like the board to consider Keith Jansen, who came before us two or three weeks ago, one of the meetings. He's been highly involved with different issues in Hummerock. He's a great liaison of the community. He's a C-level executive in his own company as well. I think he and George would be a great, two great strategic partners to help give our staff the help that they need to put together a nice plan. So for your consideration.
Is he a resident, Moore?
He is a owner, a part-time summer resident, similar to Cronin on the Waterways Committee. He owns a home in Hummerock, Marty. He lives there for three or four months out of the year, but he lives in Pembroke. And he comes, he comes to all of the meetings that...
But he doesn't live in Florida somewhere?
Oh, no, 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 no. No, he's here, and he would definitely be available and present. And that would fill the committee.
Any discussion on Moore's comments before we vote?
I have no problem with that.
You make the motion for all three of them.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'd like to move to appoint Frank Snow.
Actually, do them individually, in case we don't want them.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Frank's, appoint Frank Snow to the Coastal Advisory Committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris.
As what position?
Yeah, at what position?
As the inland representative.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
I'll make a motion to appoint George Simmons as, to the Coastal Advisory Commission as a representative of the boating community.
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Keith Jansen to the Coastal Advisory Committee as a coastal resident representative.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Second by Mr. Harris. Discussion?
So I think Moore, in order to do it properly, you've got to have to redesignate Peggy Dinger as the coastal resident, because she's already filled that slot.
You mean as the business?
Yeah. She, she right now was, I think...
You filled her in the coastal slot.
In the coastal slot. I think it was, was it my motion? It was my motion. Well, just only saying technically.
Okay, so why don't...
She's already appointed to the committee, so...
Right, she's in the committee. I mean, can't we just move her?
I'll tell you what, let's do this vote, and then you'll vote the other, the change after.
Okay, yeah, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Move to change the designation of Peggy Dinger from coastal resident representative to business representative.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. We have three people renewing for Commission on Disabilities.
I'll move John McLaughlin to be renewed on the Commission for Disabilities.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move Megan Sumner, Summer, for a renewed position on the Commission of Disabilities.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move Jeff Dugan to, as a renewed member on the Commission on Disabilities.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. And one, is there, oh...
Elaine Shimbari was the new one.
Is there another slot?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they had a lot of vacancies.
I'll move Elaine Shimbari as a new member on the Commission on Disabilities.
Second.
Second, and that's a three-year term? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move Stephen Tripp as a new member on the...
Before you make that motion, where do we stand on this committee? Because I know there were a ton of openings on the beach.
We have these two applicants for the Beach Study Committee, and we have other, we have other committees as well.
Okay.
Do we know what beaches they're interested in? Because I, I know we have, I can just look back in the detail.
Do we make any appointments to this?
We have not yet.
No.
Okay. So I would suggest we don't make any appointments until we get enough people that actually want to form a committee.
I mean, the applicants probably would ask each week.
These two?
Yeah.
Because then they may pursue another committee if we haven't approved them.
You've met these people.
You know, bring in other people.
So we have met them?
Right.
I have them, and they were...
I thought we already did Carol Walsh.
I thought we did Carol, too, but it's not.
No, we didn't.
So how many people is this supposed to have? Five to seven? No, seven to nine? I think it's in here.
Yeah, I have to look at the back.
I think seven.
I mean, it just, if there's not enough interest, if we only have two people, then I just think it's silly to create these committees that can't do anything and put two people sitting on it in limbo.
Well, they won't convene until we get enough representation.
Consists five to seven.
I mean, this is one that I would think people would be jumping out of their skin to be part of.
No.
Well, I'll let you guys decide. I would say don't do anything until we get enough interest that it's actually going to be a productive committee.
We can post it to the page.
I was thinking, could be one of the first. Well, not one of the first, we already have a lot of...
We could say we need two more members, because we have Carol and the two here.
We have Carol who?
Yep.
Stephen Tripp and Carol Walsh.
There's got to be more people.
I thought you had another woman who wanted to serve.
Peggy Dinger was...
We put Peggy Dinner on coastal.
Not Peggy, there was another one.
Was that Nancy Fay?
No. Blonde.
It was Nancy Fay.
Nancy Fay.
I mean, I can check with some of the...
Let's postpone this one.
We'll do it to next meeting.
Figure it out when we get all the names and...
Yeah.
Let's put her on Facebook, and let's see what sort of interest we get.
Yeah, I thought Nancy Fay had an interest in either one of the two committees. I thought that's the way she...
I think you're right, Marty.
She did.
We can, we can add some...
Great. Yeah.
Sure.
All right, any correspondence?
Just a package I put up there regarding the service anniversaries.
Barbara, Barbara, yes, I have that.
Barbara, so.
Yeah. Sorry. Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have some terrific anniversaries to celebrate. All employees with five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and thirty-plus years are recognized by their supervisors, and employees who have been with us for five to ten years will be receiving a commemorative gift from their supervisors in the next, oh, commemorative certificate, sorry, thanking them for their service to the town in the next week or so. But I'd like to call out those who have been working for the town for both twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and forty, and I'll separate it, because I think it warrants calling them out. These individuals will receive an engraved service anniversary gift from the town in a dedication, as well as, at the point of working for the town for twenty-five years, you also get your name engraved on the plaque in the Board of Selectmen's room. So I think we're going to have a much, another plaque to put in the back of the row. So I'd like to congratulate the following five firefighters who have been dedicating their time to the town for twenty-five years. Mark Donovan, Alfred Elliott, Charles Hollis, Michael Regan, and Raymond Sanborn, Jr. So congratulations for twenty-five years of service, and thank you. And then thirty years, we have Teresa Duggan from the Police Department, William Whittier from the Police Department, Kevin Talbot from the Police Department, and Michael Dwight from the Water Department, and Frances Lyden from Public Grounds. Thirty years dedication to the town, so thank you.
Thank you.
And thirty-five years, grateful to Brian McGowan's service.
Fire.
From the Fire Department as well. And then, that's terrific, and then...
Brian, thirty-five years.
And it gets even longer.
Started when he was seven.
I know. David Egan, forty years with the Fire Department, so that's terrific. So thank you very much for your dedication. And that concludes the...
We're doing something right if people stay here for forty years. Good.
It's a long time.
Great.
But thank you.
Any other new business? Any other business anyone want to go through?
No, but pretty much everything's covered. Just to remind everybody about Heritage Days again, this Saturday and Sunday. I think it starts at ten a.m. Saturday morning.
Don't forget Luminary.
On Friday, Friday night at dark.
Right.
And, uh...
Wish I had a book.
Did we have a couple of the meeting minutes as well?
Oh, yes. I did read them. I didn't see anything.
Okay. How about, we'll do that after we do anybody else's new business. Sean, anything to add?
No, I don't, Mr. Chair.
Laura, anything?
I'm good tonight, thank you.
Great. Sean, how about you?
I'll just do real quick. I guess it's pretty important.
Don't be quick.
Take it. Board of Health last night, they just talked about a couple of different things. I just talked to Tricia about, was, well, regulations. Jennifer has drafted some regs that we haven't never had in the past. So she invited a couple of well drillers in last night, and there were three people from the Water Resource Committee here as well, and it was the most educational thing I've heard recently. I thought a well was a well, but there's a lot of different, there are two different types, artesian and shallow well. So they're going to be fine-tuning these regulations and then coming before us at